Want to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Welcome to our East Green Bush Board Meeting. July 29th, we have a big agenda ahead of us and an important agenda. And I know a lot of information to share tonight. With that attendance tonight, we have board members present and Mr. Dunn is present virtually. Let's see John, welcome John. If you could now please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the vertine and justice for all.
Thank you. Normally, our agenda would have our student council representatives, but seeing it's summertime and we don't have those yet, we will move forward. An important part of our discussion tonight is a presentation of the reopening plan that was released to the public on Monday evening. And we know it has generated a lot of comments, questions, things for us to consider as a board. And we wanted to take this opportunity for our superintendent to present to the community, answer some of those questions, and then get into more of the details of the plan, as well as some of the constraints and things like that, that went into with the task force, thinking about what is the best option for our school community, all of our students, K-12, our staff, to come back to school safely, using the guidance that's been put out by the State Education Department and the Department of Health. So I will turn it over to Mr. Simons. He has a presentation and we hope that you find it informative, as well as answer many of the questions that have been brought to the board and the superintendent when the plan was released.
Thank you, Mr. Buno. I'm going to ask Mr. Goodwin, who is running our technology this evening, to just make a slight adjustment to the camera so that we can share this information with our community. Well, good evening, everyone. Good evening to our board members for being here this evening. I want to thank all of the members of the community who are participating via the live stream. I do regret the circumstances that prevent you from gathering with us at the meeting so that we could have more of an exchange of discussion and a dialogue regarding the school reopening plan. There are documents posted on Board Docs, which is the tool that the board uses to present the agenda to the public for the meeting. Included within those documents is the presentation that you see on the screen, but also some documents that we've been preparing specifically to address some of the concerns and questions that we've received since we released the school reopening plan on Monday for public review and for participation in this process. Before I move into the formal presentation, I want to talk a little bit about what some of the considerations are for not only East Green Bush School District, but also all of the school districts in New York State as we consider reopening. First and foremost, the decision to reopen our schools will be made by the governor, and that will be made in a few days. And we will present that timeline as part of the presentation. But schools have been asked to put together plans for reopening the schools that include in-person instruction, remote instruction, and hybrid models. The reason that we were required to do that is because at any point in time, as the state, the Department of Health, and the governor's office monitors the situation with the number of COVID-19 cases, at any time, we could have to, we may be forced by circumstances regarding the health issues to switch to a remote, full-remote model for all of our students. So the plan is comprehensive in the sense that it addresses each of those models of instruction. And we want to take some time to help you understand the factors that went into that. Some of the constraints that we face as a district may be different from other districts. And some of the opportunities that we have as a district and the assets that we have as a district may be different as well. We are a district of multiple elementary school buildings. For example, we are a district that operates a separate middle school campus from a high school campus. And those particular factors play into our ability to reopen and the model by which we can reopen. Transportation is another factor that is affected by the square mileage of our district. We are a 76-square-mile district. A district such as North Colony is about 29 square miles. So that is a factor. We're a very large geographic district. Our students and our families are spread out over 76 square miles. And that is a factor that affects our transportation operation. Another factor that affects the district is, in some districts that are able to do different things regarding the arrangement of students for in-person learning, they may have the middle school and the high school on the same campus, and they may be able to bus kids together. And in some cases, districts like ours are more challenged to do that. Additionally, we are a district that is growing in enrollment. We are, we have projected at various board meetings, including in our budget and review, an advisory committee that our district is expected to grow in terms of our student enrollment by 150 to 200 students at the elementary school level in the next five years. And that process has been occurring in terms of receiving more students into our classrooms over the last two years. So all of those factors, in combination with the New York State Department of Health and the New York State Education Department guidelines, go into our district's planning process regarding how we are going to present to the state a model of instruction for the fall that reopens our schools safely and that provides quality education for all kids, kindergarten through 12th grade. The other thing I would point out is, we've heard concerns about remote learning. We heard concerns about the way that remote learning was provided to students in the spring of last school year. We have spent a great deal of time through our task force looking at some of those issues of concern and providing more structure to the remote learning model that we plan to follow with our students in the fall. Some of that structure includes the increases in live interaction between the teachers and the students that we heard about during the spring, particularly at the middle school level and to some degree at the high school level. So in putting this plan together, before I go further with addressing some of the issues around the elementary school concerns, I want to thank the task force that worked with me since the middle of June to put this plan together. We had more than 70 people, including teachers, administrators, parents, board members, support staff, our school physician, Dr. Albert, and our nurses, and many others contribute to the plan. And it was a cross-section of individuals represented by all of our schools in various roles within the district and within the community. And in putting the plan together, we specifically wanted to ensure that we were either meeting or exceeding the health and safety standards of the Department of Health, which were required by districts to reopen their schools. And we also wanted to continue the tradition of offering educational excellence to all of our students. And one of the big concerns that came out of our discussion is, how can we do this equitably? How can we do this in a way that provides for children equitably, given the constraints that we've been talking about? And one of the primary factors that we have to consider as we reopen our schools is how do we implement social distancing in every classroom? Six feet between students in each and every one of our classrooms from kindergarten up through our seniors and high school. And so one of the first things we did was we asked our administrators with their head custodians to go through every building and to reimagine the classroom space and determine how many desks can you get into each classroom and have those students sitting six feet apart? And in some cases, larger rooms wouldn't accommodate as many kids as some smaller rooms because of the shape of the rooms. And every building is a little bit different. For example, Belltop and DPS are smaller buildings. They have less classrooms. And in doing so, and looking at what we would have to do to have social distancing, the principals came back and discussed with me that it was about 50% of the children could be in any one of those classrooms at one time and still have the six-feet parameter for social distancing in place. In that process, they looked at options, including not only using all of the classrooms, looking at art rooms, potential use of gymnasiums and cafeterias. And we made a decision that, based on that analysis, we had a challenge. When you don't have sufficient classroom space to include all of the students, the options were limited. Double the number of classrooms. Spread the kids out by doubling the number of the classrooms. Well, we don't have twice as many classrooms in each school. We don't have unavailable classrooms that haven't been being utilized, not that many, across the district. So doubling the number of classrooms within each elementary school wouldn't work because we don't have the space, including if we were to utilize other spaces. The other option would be to double the number of teachers. For example, if you have 22 kids typically in a first-grade class, you would have 11 students in a first-grade class. Well, where would the other 11 go? If you had an extra room, they would go to the extra room, but they would need an extra teacher or a staff member to teach them at the same time in order to bring everybody in. So doubling the number of classrooms was not an option for the district because we simply don't have the right count of classrooms because we've been operating efficiently and adjusting our classes to the enrollment and our buildings to the enrollment. And secondly, we don't have the ability to double the number of staff. So the only option then becomes reduce the number of children by 50% that are in your classrooms at any one time. And so the AB model, which is applying to the elementary school, is based on the formula that we need to follow regarding the number of students that we can reasonably educate in our classrooms and follow and comply with the New York State Department of Health guidelines for reopening schools would say, six feet between the kids, six feet at all times as you are transitioning through the school, and wearing masks. And we'll talk about the mask requirement in a little bit. So that particular AB model presents challenges for our parents and our families. And the biggest challenge that I've heard about is childcare. We anticipated that that was going to be a major concern of our families. And I wish I had an answer in terms of bringing all of the kids in and managing the social distancing requirements. We are working with our community to provide affordable options for childcare in East Green Bush. I have had several meetings with Green Bush Childcare Director Kim Bourbon, the Green Bush Childcare Board. I have had discussions with the YMCA. Both the YMCA and the Green Bush Childcare are licensed childcare providers through the Office of Children and Family Services. And they have been partners with our district for a while. In fact, Green Bush Childcare has operated before and after-school programs in all of our schools and still will do that this year, even though we're under a different model. But we need options for full-day childcare, and we are working to develop those. Two sites for that have been identified. We don't have full approval of those sites yet, but we have identified St. Mary's of Clinton Heights Church. In fact, myself, our Director of Facilities, Paul Bickel, Peter Goodwin, our Director of Technology, visited the church today. We toured the parish center. The space is ideal for approximately 70 children. The guidelines for the operation of childcare includes a 10-to-1 ratio, 10 children to one childcare provider. That particular facility has a large meeting room, which can house two groups of 10, and five classrooms, which can house another five groups of 10, for a total of about 70. The parish is supportive of us using that facility. That would be a program operated by Green Bush Childcare. And they want, they are going to seek approval from the diocese. Approval of the diocese is required for that. We know that's not the same thing as having your kids come to school every day, but we want to provide a childcare option and work with the community to be able to make sure that you have that concern met. Additionally, the Phillips Road Firehouse has been identified and approved for use by the district. And in reviewing both of those options, we need to wait and see how many children and families would need childcare to determine whether or not that would become a site as well. Ideally, we would, we would, Green Bush Childcare has indicated that the parish center at St. Mary's is a little more suitable. They have been in there before for summer childcare programs. But the Phillips Road might be needed as well. We're working every day on this, and we're hoping to be able to share more information with the community about it. So I want people to know that we don't discount your concerns. We do care about making sure that working families can go to work. We understand some of the challenges and hardships associated with the model that we are presenting. But that is an option that is currently under consideration. The other thing that we're doing in conversations with the Y is, the Y has always offered before and after-school programs. They offer summer camps. Gyms are not approved right now for operation. So the entire YMCA facility right now is open for the possibility of childcare. Of course, the YMCA is hopeful that they will have permission to resume their other activities, but in the event that that is, does not come along, they are open to expanding the childcare to include some full-day options as well. And we're in discussions with both of those groups. Additionally, today, I asked Linda Wager, our Director of Business and Finance, if she could contact the American Red Cross. We had an idea that we thought would both be beneficial to the community and to our high school kids. We are going to encourage any of our high school kids, I think you have to be 16 years or older, who want to take the Advanced Certification Babysitting Course through the Red Cross to register. So hopefully, we have some high school parents watching out there as well. We'll send something out tomorrow about it, and we will incur the fee for registration, which is about $45 per kid. In addition to childcare and the impact on childcare, I have heard concerns from kindergarten parents regarding the impact of their kindergarteners' adjustment back into school. I have heard through a full-day option. And I've heard concerns from our elementary families about some of the challenges of needing support for remote learning when the kids are not receiving in-person instruction in class. And currently, the district is looking at a model with other districts and with Green Bush Childcare and the Y and our unions to potentially have some staff assigned to the childcare centers to create remote learning centers in the community. So we would be looking at a model that may involve some of our teaching assistants being assigned for part of the day in the morning and the afternoon to provide academic support for kids for a period of time of about two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon. I have not yet had full discussions with everyone that I need to have discussions regarding that. But that might address the concern that, I'm a working parent. I may even be working from home, and I might not be able to provide the help that my child needed or deal with some of the learning issues that may present challenges for their children by having a certified, licensed New York State Teaching Assistant as part of the academic component of the childcare. So we have been working on some things to address the childcare concern. And we hope that within the next two weeks or so, we will be able to release more information about that. We expect that the childcare programs would be developed around the same time that we will have the groupings for A group and B group determined in every school. And we've encouraged our parents who may have preferences to contact the school principal. The other issue that is coming up in the public comment this evening is there's some concern that the district is not operating or offering a full-remote option for our families. That is a misunderstanding. We do have a process to have families let us know if they have concerns about their child returning to school in person. The process is for, and it is identified in the plan, written in the plan, to contact your child's individual school building principal to have a discussion about what your concerns are. We may be able to address those concerns in ways that would relieve your concern, would offer opportunities for your kids to participate somehow in in-person learning. We may be able to accommodate that concern differently than just assigning your child to a full-remote option. In the event that we are unable to do that, we will provide a full-remote option. And we are considering how we're going to go about doing that for our families who have either an underlying medical concern for their child, for a family member, or who are just feeling that it's unsafe to have their child return to school. At this point, the program is not figured out. And the reasons for that are, we don't know how many kids would want that option. And we also have obligations to provide accommodations for our staff. We don't know how many teachers and staff may have concerns and issues related to returning to work. Our process will take shape over the next couple of weeks. Again, on or about by August 17th, we hope to have a list of children whose families are requesting a remote option. And we hope to have a list of staff members for which we need to accommodate with a remote option. And we are talking with other districts in the Questar Bosse's about creating a model together so that we would be matching up kids who need instruction with teachers who can provide that instruction, who are certified, but will be doing so remotely. When that will occur, the schedule of how that will occur has not been developed yet. But that option is available for our families. And the first step is to contact your building principal. I hope those of you who have that concern will do that tomorrow through an email because we want to have all of that information pulled together for the district to plan the program by August 17th. As you might imagine, this is a very fluid situation. We are working on it almost 100% of the time. The reopening plans themselves will be submitted on Friday, but they are not set in stone. The State Education Department and the Department of Health recognize that in order to do this successfully, districts and communities are going to need time to continue to monitor not only the COVID-19 situation, but to have things in place regarding use of facilities, appropriate PPE, appropriate procedures for training staff and children, temperature checks, screenings of employees. And all of those procedures and how to logistically implement those procedures in a way that keeps everybody safe and still provides quality education are all being put together right now. Part of the process is community input. And so at this evening's board meeting, through the public comment that you're going to provide via email, through the public sessions that we're planning on Wednesday of next week, August 5th, and on Thursday, those will be a little bit more interactive. We're hoping to use some of the same technology that we use for our session in the spring. And we're having discussions about how we're going to go about doing that. And I would expect that the community will receive information on how to access those meetings, likely by, I would say, Monday, Monday afternoon. Okay? And that'll be sent through our school messenger system. And we're trying to figure out the best way to do it. You may recall that we had a little glitch the last time, and we want to make sure that we avoid that. So the childcare issue, we know it's critical. The, we're working on it. The academic support for kids that may be in remote circumstances and need extra help. The process for parents to express concerns about requiring a full-remote option, those things are all in place. And we hope to be able to continue to work with our public, with our staff, with our board, and our administrative team to make this process work as smoothly as possible to meet everyone's needs. I would encourage everyone to go on our website and to read the Frequently Asked Questions. We will be updating this Frequently Asked Questions document. In particular, we'll be taking some of the questions that you provide in public comment. And if we've missed it or we haven't addressed it in our Frequently Asked Questions document, we will make sure that we do that. So people should be looking on the website every day as we update this document. Want to go to the formal presentation, and we adjusted, we adjusted this a little bit to help explain some of our challenges regarding full-in-person learning for all of our kids. The first slide, we've worked on this over the last few days. And we think it provides somewhat of a detailed scenario of some of the challenges we face regarding space and staffing for bringing all of our kids in. And I hope that everybody can see this on the screen. Along the left-hand side of the columns, we have listed all of our schools. Next to that column, we have the current number of projected classrooms, kindergarten through fifth grade in each of the schools. So for example, you see Belltop is projected to have 16 total classes. That's kindergarten through fifth grade. The third column is a scenario that would involve, how do we get more classrooms in each of the buildings? Remember, we said that we are utilizing every space that we can. Well, one option would be to move the fifth graders out of their neighborhood schools and into the middle school. That would create more classrooms at the elementary school level. We strived within our plans to value the neighborhood school concept that East Green Bush has had in place for a long time. We were trying to keep the current configuration in place as we did this. We, we anticipated after four months, three and a half to four months of being outside of the school, that it would be a more successful return of kids, particularly at the elementary school level, if they could return to their home schools. So on our AB model, all of the kids are going back to their particular elementary schools. We believe that not only the academic needs of the kids, but the social-emotional needs of the kids and how those social-emotional needs were impacted during the period of March 13th through June 15th, those are factors that we need to pay attention to, and those are critically important. So we wanted to do the best of our ability to have kids going back to their neighborhood schools. We simply don't have the classrooms. One option would be to pull the fifth grade out and reassign that to the middle school. That would give us 18 spaces. We're moving from 16 sections to 18 spaces. Remember I said, in order to meet the social distancing requirements, we need to double the number of rooms and double the number of staff or reduce the class enrollment by 50%? So and even by doing that, we still need 26 spaces to have all of the children K through 4 now come to Belltop and have desks socially distanced apart with about half the kids in the classroom. That leaves us eight classrooms still short. And now that we have 13 sections of K-4, we have a need for 26 spaces. We have a need for 26 teachers. So we still are 13 classroom teachers short. When we moved through each of these buildings and we took a look at what the impact would be of moving the fifth graders out, we still come up with a need for 152 spaces total in the district. We're 25 rooms short, and we need 76 classroom teachers. So moving a grade level out doesn't help us. So moving a grade level out doesn't help us completely get all of the kids to come in person. When we move the fifth graders to the middle school, that's 14 sections of fifth graders into the middle school. That impacts our ability to have seventh and eighth graders participating in two days of in-person learning. We would have to reduce that at the middle school level. And we still would need 28 additional rooms and 14 additional teachers. So the effect of all of this would be that we would not be able to offer in-person learning in the way that we have designed it, in the way that we have scheduled it for our middle school and our high school kids. And we may still not have sufficient space and sufficient staff to deal with the social distancing guidelines and the educational requirements of the Department of Health and the State Education Department. So one of the options was to hire more staff, even if we had all of the rooms. The count, to hire certified teachers at the elementary level. And again, there are different models being utilized in other districts, and I'll talk about that in just a little bit. We would need 90 teachers. Well, that's completely cost prohibitive. We can't hire 90 additional teachers even if we had the rooms. We could assign teachers differently. Some districts are assigning teachers differently to be able to accommodate this. They're not only moving kids from the elementary schools into the middle school or the high school. They are looking at ways, once they have done that, to be able to staff classrooms differently. I can tell you that all districts are struggling with meeting some of these challenges. I meet with the suburban council districts' superintendents quite frequently, and I meet with all of the superintendents in the Questar. All of us are working through these issues to see what we can do to make sure that there's school reopening. And it is, it's going to be positive, but it is challenging to do. We have SED regulations. There are certain programs that are mandated to provide. I reviewed the State Department of Education regulations probably 10 times. And nowhere in the regulations does it say that you can't, that you don't have to offer physical education. None of the requirements that are in state education regulations related to curriculum have been changed. The obligation of the district is to make sure that we are meeting the learning standards K through 12. Physical education is a requirement. Now, we could deliver that physical education in different ways. And we did so through remote learning during the spring. That is an option that could be considered, but it doesn't necessarily give us the space we need. So right now in our plan, the gyms are being planned for physical education activities that would involve social distancing. And even if we were to use those gyms, they don't provide a sufficient number of classrooms, and they present certain ventilation issues for kids being in there all day. Another factor that we have to consider are the certifications. Okay, the certifications regulations indicate that we can provide instruction to students up to 10 hours a week by someone who is uncertified in that area. It's called incidental teaching. But we have to demonstrate that we have hired, made an attempt to hire certified teachers first. The number of additional teachers that would be needed in the classrooms exceeds the number of special area teachers that we might reassign. So for example, academic intervention services teachers. They're providing academic intervention services for the kids who need reading and math. We could conceivably reassign those students, those teachers, to groups of kids as general classroom teachers, but then that would affect the overall delivery of services for AIS. And we know that there are going to be many more kids coming back to school who may need AIS after having been in remote learning in the spring. And we have contractual considerations within our employee groups. We could consider assigning teaching assistants to cover some classes if we had the space. We only have about 29 general education teaching assistants in the district who are not assigned to special education programs or individual special education students on IEPs. About 29, isn't that right, Molly? Okay, some districts are utilizing teaching assistants where appropriate and within the guidelines to be able to have group sizes of about 10 or 11 kids per class where they have the space. We still don't have the space, and we still would not have the staff even if we utilized all of those teaching assistants. However, we are looking at all of this. Right, we are looking at all of this, we are studying this, we are trying to see what might be able to be done to make adjustments to the plan. I don't know that we are going to be able to have full in-person learning for elementary students and do it safely and do it with the educational quality that is included within this plan. Okay, I can tell you with a level of confidence that the task force, myself, and the administrative team are putting in front of our board and community what we believe to be is the safest and the most sound program that provides educational quality to our students. That plan involves a blending of in-person learning for our children, K through 12, two days a week, a hybrid model which utilizes project-based and other assignments while students are engaged in remote learning. And to address the concern that we heard from parents that we did not have enough consistency last spring in providing live virtual instruction, we have a live virtual instruction day, which enables the entire class to engage with the teacher and also puts us in a good position to make sure that our teachers know how our kids are doing with remote learning and have opportunities to engage in live virtual instruction in the event that the governor or the health conditions get to such a point where we need to immediately go into remote instruction full-time. There have been a number of discussions across the country and across our state regarding flu season. Okay, we wanted to have a plan that addressed the concerns that we heard in the spring, provided equity regarding the level of in-person learning that every child through K through 12 would get, with the exception of our special education students will be getting more in-person services and come to school more frequently. That put us in the best position to offer safety to our kids and to offer educational quality, but to be able to pivot and move to full remote learning if that became necessary. We're hoping that it doesn't. The plans began to be developed, again, in early June. We started a stakeholder group. We did have multiple meetings. And we divided our group into subcommittees and working on each of the areas that were required by the state's plan. Health and safety, teaching and learning, maintenance of facilities. We're just three examples. How are we going to service our special education kids, ENL kids, students whose primary language is not English? We spent a great deal of time reviewing the CDC guidelines, the New York State Education Department, and the New York State Department of Health guidance. And we reviewed school reopening plans from other states. New York's plan did not come out until a few weeks ago. Other states had plans that were available for our review. And we sent surveys to our parents to find out if families were, would have issues with connectivity regarding the internet or devices. And Mr. Goodwin, who's our Director of Technology, has collected that data, and we are making arrangements to provide what may be needed to any family who has an issue. Perhaps they're in an area that doesn't have Wi-Fi or that, if they need a device. Transportation is one of the biggest challenges of districts right now. We think we have a pretty good plan based on the hybrid model that we've designed that will involve approximately 22 students sitting on a 66-passenger bus, one child per seat, sitting next to the window, spaced apart, masks on the driver, masks on the children, and windows open where weather permits and to provide appropriate ventilation. We surveyed families to try to figure out whether or not parents would need the children to ride the bus or whether they would be dropping their children off to school. And the data that we received indicated that we could expect approximately the same amount of kids riding the bus under these circumstances that we normally would bus to school. And I think with parents not knowing the plan itself at the time we surveyed, there may be more parents who might consider dropping their kids off at school. And I think we probably will do some resur surveying. Childcare, we knew that as we started to look at the space considerations and the staffing considerations, that childcare would become an issue. We wanted to get a sense of how many families would have that issue. We asked a specific question about, in the event that kids were home and remote for a full day, would you need a full-day option? And I was a little bit surprised by the survey because it indicated that more than 50% of the families would not need a full-day option. That's something that we might need to dig a little deeper into as we work through these concerns. The timeline includes August 1st through August 7th. Governor Cuomo will announce whether or not he will permit schools to reopen. As part of this process, in addition to engaging with our community through meetings, we may hear ideas. We may hear questions that cause us to go back and revisit the plan. And I can assure you, we will do that. We also may receive further mandates from the governor's office. If you can recall, between March 13th and till today, we have received a lot of information on a two-week basis. Every two weeks, there was a new set of executive orders that the district needed to respond to. So in addition to giving us permission to open the schools, there might be additional parameters. We don't know what those parameters are going to be. We are prepared to respond to those. Additionally, one of the benchmarks for determining whether or not we can open is how are we doing with COVID-19 cases in the capital region? And the metric will be that schools can reopen if the infection rate remains below 5% or lower using a 14-day average. And right now, at this point, we're nowhere near that, which is good news for our students and our schools. August 5th, there'll be a virtual parent-community input session. We anticipate that that'll be around 6:30. August 13th, there'll be another session. So if you can't make the August 15th, we're going to use some tools, including thought exchange, which enables us to better understand and prioritize what the concerns of our community will be. And right now, the first day of school is September 8th. That will be the first day of instruction. In its calendar, the district had built four superintendent's conference days. And before this happened, we anticipate that those days will provide professional development to our staff remotely, which will include training and all of the safety and health procedures that we will have to follow to be in compliance with the Department of Health, as well as technology professional development to support both the virtual live learning model as well as the remote model. And most of those sessions will be provided in small groups and/or in in the remote sessions, virtual sessions. And putting together the plan at the forefront of our thinking was what we have accomplished as a district and what our board's direction has been. And each time we come out to the community and we talk about the budget, we go back to four areas. And these four, even in a pandemic, even when we have the challenging circumstances that we've had over the course of the last five months, even during the difficult period of school shutdown, academic excellence and safety have been the number one priorities of our board. So with this plan, we want to make sure that we can maintain academic excellence. Additionally, we want to be able to deliver educational, staff the educational program in ways that are fiscally responsible. But we also understand that there are going to be budgetary items that we're just going to have to do to comply. And the example will be, I will be bringing to the board next meeting, a purchase order for some of the equipment that we need to make sure that the classrooms are sanitized. And it'll be a significant expense. But in order to efficiently sanitize the classrooms, we're going to need the misters, and we're going to need the generators that generate the product. And I'm going to ask the board for approval of that. And we want to have those available in all of our buildings to be able to make sure that the classes are disinfected. So that's an example of fiscal resources that are needed to make sure that our human resources, our custodian and maintenance groups are able to do their jobs in compliance with the Department of Health guidelines. Positive collaboration with our, and relationships with our community and families. We hope that even though the community may not agree with every component of the plan, I hope they will understand that our intent is to be able to be providing quality educational services to the kids in the safest manner that we can possibly deliver. Okay, the other factor involved in community relationships is we want to engage with you. We want to make sure that you are able to read the plan, that you are able to send questions. I received probably 70 emails since Monday evening, and we have tried to be responsive to those emails. And we know we probably have another 40 or 50 in the public comment tonight. So while we can engage together in the high school auditorium or in the middle school or in Janay right now, we can engage differently. And just I hope that people see that, although you may not agree with all of the elements of the plan, that we are striving to make sure that you are part of the process. And fourth, we want to have a progressive, innovative, and safe environment. Safety being the first and the most important right now. I can tell you that the Board of Education of this district in East Greenbush has had safety in its DNA, and that is no exaggeration. Every meeting we have, we talk about safety. The Safety Committee of the district is very, very active. In fact, the school boards just came out with a policy requiring a Safety Committee. I think it's been how many years since there's been a Safety Committee in the East Greenbush School District? So safety is very important to us. Being progressive and being innovative and making sure that we have high standards for our curriculum, for our teachers, and for our students is important as well. And in delivering those standards, we want to make sure that we do so in a way that is equitable. We have a diverse student population. Okay, we have students that need extra support to meet the standards. We have students that need extra challenge. That's why we offer a hopeful complement of college credit courses and AP courses. While some have suggested that remote learning may be easier for high school students, I can tell you that in some cases, it wasn't very easy between March 13th and June 15th. And we know of cases where some of our high school students struggled. And we want to be able to address that in the plan by making sure that those high school students have equitable opportunities for in-person learning. We also want to make sure that our elective courses and our AP courses aren't dropped from the schedule. Now, there are some school districts who are forced by constraints to put together middle school and high school schedules that don't offer electives right now. We want to try to make sure that our kids, particularly our juniors or seniors who are looking beyond their graduation, and I'll remember what happened to the seniors last year, to their post commencement goals, whether that be going to college two-year or four-year, whether that moving right into a career is the best option for them, or serving us in the military. We have to make sure that our high school students, our middle school students, and our elementary students all have similar opportunities for a progressive, innovative, and safe environment, even under these circumstances. So the hybrid proposal does not include in-person learning every day at any level. We wish we could do that. I don't see any way to do that, given the health and safety guidelines, particularly the social distancing requirement. We've reduced the class sizes by 50% to enable that physical distancing to occur in all of our schools. We have Group A and Group B. Group A will attend on Mondays and Thursdays. Group B will attend on Tuesdays and Fridays. We have received some feedback. Why didn't we do AA days, BB days? Because it might be easier to manage in terms of family schedules. We chose to do AB days because the scenario would be on an AA day, if you come to in-person learning on Tuesday, you would not see your teacher again to the following Monday, and there would be five days in between in-person instruction. So we weighed that within our committee. We can see some of the advantages with an AABB schedule. But we landed on, for now, this particular model because we wanted to make sure that kids could see their teacher and connect with their teacher more frequently than under an AABB model. The virtual instruction days have been a question. We need to remember, maybe I didn't say this explicitly, last spring, not only were we directed to shut down the schools and provide remote instruction, we were directed to have nobody coming into our schools, other than those people that were essential. we were directed to have nobody coming into our schools, other than those people that were essential. And so teachers were under the constraint to be home delivering instruction. That will not be the case in the fall. Our teachers will be, and our staff will be reporting to work and providing the instructional program from their classrooms. That gives them additional access to technology. It gives them additional access to instructional materials. We have had more time to plan the virtual instruction and the remote instruction component now. And so that virtual instruction day is designed to, to provide instruction and support for the children who are engaged in remote learning, to monitor how are they doing, to provide specific feedback, assessment, to monitor their progress, and to provide scaffolding for students that may need extra help to be able to complete the remote learning component. It will also involve an opportunity for the teachers to engage with the technology that they may need in the event that we have to shift to full remote learning. Additionally, we are assigning kids to smaller groups. The groups will be very small, so there will be an advantage of in-person learning on two days that may not be there if it were five days. A group of 11 students to have to support is a lot more easy to address individual needs and differentiate instruction when you have 11 kids in a class instead of 22. At the high school level, it may be 15 or 16 instead of 30. So learning can be facilitated easier in in-person instruction, and we may be able to catch up on some of the gaps that kids have experienced during the spring by having more student teacher contact time, even though we have fewer in-person days. Periodically, we will announce this, we have superintendent's days, but periodically we may shorten the schedule on those days. And we will let you know in plenty of advance so that our teachers are teaching social studies or teaching the same courses, math, science, can get together and share ideas to improve the quality and to enhance what the offerings are for our kids. So there will be some time where we will build into those days for professional development of the learning experiences for the kids. When the kids are not in school, we're, we're going to be approaching this with more of an assignment based approach or a project based approach. And many of the options that we offer through that will be more extended day projects. And it won't just be simply something that can be done in one sitting. It might be an extensive, more extensive project. And we may engage kids in ways that kids that are participating in class on an A day in person and participating in a B day can be brought together for a cooperative project through the virtual live instruction and the remote learning. And we're talking about how to do that. So the schedule looks like this. Group A comes in person on Monday. They go to remote on Tuesday. On Wednesday, there's live virtual instruction. On Thursday, it's in person and it's remote on Friday. The in-person instruction, the remote instruction and the live virtual instruction work together to support differentiation of the instruction and development of learning experiences, whether you are in person, whether you're remote or whether you're not, this will all fit together in a way that is more integrated than what could be offered in the spring. Now, as you look at this schedule, you see that students with disabilities who are in full day special classes will receive more in-person instruction. And that is in compliance with the requirements that students with disabilities who are in certain special education settings during the spring may have experienced significant challenges with learning and may have a greater need. So we have prioritized students with disabilities and engaged them four days a week. And I'm going to have this Mrs. McGrath in a little bit, talk about why it's not five days. We've talked about equity for all students, K-12. We understand the challenges of not having students in school at the elementary school level for working families. However, we believe in this plan, we've provided equity for all kids. This plan enables kids to return to their home schools. We're not moving at this point grade levels out of home schools to be able to accommodate more in-person learning. It is an option that we are discussing. It preserves our special education programs and services and provides those services in general through in-person learning, although there will be some, some situations where a combination of remote and in-person may have to occur depending on IEPs and also needs of the kids. Academic intervention services is reading and math services for kids who need extra support to meet the learning standards. Occupational therapists, physical therapists and speech therapists and the students that receive those services. I think they would, the OTs, the PTs and the speech therapists would tell me that I am understating the problem if I said it was less than ideal in the spring to engage students in activities that are physically strengthening themselves through PT or speech therapy is very difficult to engage in a remote setting. So we're going to be doing that in person. Art and music at the elementary school level is not mandated. But it is essential. And in our plan, we will provide art and music. It may be in a different form. We're not able to bring 50 kids together at the middle school for a band. We may have to have smaller groups meeting, practicing the social distancing requirements, which in some cases indicate 12 feet, which is tough to do with a band or an orchestra or a chorus. But our program provides this. Art and music is not mandated. And one of the options that could be considered is to reduce art and music and offset that reduction with different staffing to be able to provide more elementary instruction. I don't believe that that would provide a well-rounded education for our kids. And I think that that would be difficult to do. And the other thing that we've talked about is we have a lot of very talented art, music and physical education teachers, and they are able to do things that not only make use of art, music and physical exercise, but to do it in ways that teach kids procedures. And those procedures are important now, not only for them to re-access learning under these circumstances, but it's also important for them to be able to have the social connection and the experience that comes with learning art, music and PE. We think it's critically important. Our district has always supported the special area programs. In order to get more space, perhaps get different staff, those areas could be looked at. But we felt very strongly that art, music and physical education to be provided in some form that was critically important. Fizzette is required. Smaller in-person class sizes are allowing for more personalized learning. And I talked about the electives, the honors, the APs and the college credit courses. We have a culture of academic excellence. Our high school has been named twice as a silver medals high school by U.S. News and World Report. We worked through some challenges last spring regarding grading because we have some students and some families who were really concerned that a pass fail motto was going to affect the overall academic performance of their kids. We have a culture of excellence. We want to try to maintain that culture of excellence, even under these circumstances, by offering electives, honors, APs and college credit courses. A modified schedule at the high school level in order to accommodate middle schoolers moving in there because we've moved fourth and fifth graders into the, possibly fourth and fifth graders now, would not enable us to offer the electives, honors, AP and college credit courses because we wouldn't have the classrooms to schedule it. And we would have to reduce the overall time that the high school kids were in school. And if you look at districts that have full in-person learning every day at the elementary school level, they do not have the same level of personal instruction or full complement of courses that we have in our plan for high school and for the middle school. We could change that. Under the area of health and safety, we have, these are all spelled out in the plan. Face coverings have to be worn at all times by individuals on school buses, students and the driver and aides, and inside the schools except when eating or drinking, small breaks or instruction as indicated by the teacher. So students are coming onto the bus with a mask unless they are medically excused or have a medical accommodation that requires them not to wear a mask. And they are sitting on the bus by the windows. And the only seats that will have more than one student on them would be a family grouping. So if you have a third grader and a fourth grader and you're in the same family, they could sit in the same seat. The class desks will be spread out in every classroom with a designated space. We've shared with the community pictures of our summer school. Our summer school has accommodated approximately 155 children in groupings that enable six foot distancing. We're talking about 4,000 students now, having to be socially distanced in every classroom. We have not had one issue at our summer school program. And we were one of the first to say, we want to come out and do in-person summer school because we believe our special education. And that is to the credit of our staff and Ms. McGrath, who's sitting here behind the camera, our director of PPS. We don't want to permit sharing of school supplies, pens and pencils. We want to have PE classes when weather permits outside. Our staffing at the custodial and maintenance level is going to have to be adjusted to make sure that every space can be cleaned and those spaces that are required to be disinfected are just disinfected every evening. So we're looking at a shift of some of our substitute custodians to bring in in the evenings. With our evening crews, we're looking at potentially changes and shifts that would enable more people on night and people on Saturdays. And we are looking to supplement some of our custodial staff where necessary with outside services. And we're having some conversations about how to do this with Mr. Bickel, our director of facilities. And we'll be having conversations on Friday with the CICA. We are also having to meet the requirement to do temperature checks. And this has been a big discussion across schools. The regulation says schools are responsible for ensuring that parents implement health screenings and temperature checks. Some have asked us why it is that we can't do temperature checks like we're doing in summer school? We have aides on the buses and teaching assistants on the buses getting off, taking the temperature before the children get on the bus. That's worked really well for summer school. The volume of bussing and the volume of kids, we don't have a staff member to put on every bus. The second issue of concern is sometimes families have their child go to the bus stop and then they have to get to work. And yes, there's other families in the neighborhood that look after that, that those kids on the bus stop. And generally, they're safe. What would happen in the event that a child did have a temperature of 100 or more? Who would we contact? What would we do? The bus driver has to drive the bus. The other kids are on the bus. It's too difficult to manage with the volume that we have. So we're going to be sending the parents a screening tool that is available on the website for which you can do the screening. And it'll ask you questions like, have you, has your child had a temperature of 100 degrees or more? Has your child indicated any symptoms of COVID-19 in the list, the symptoms? Has your, have, have you or your child, has your child been exposed to somebody who has been identified as a positive case of COVID-19? Have you been to any states that are currently under the quarantine of Governor Cuomo? Or some of the countries that have been, been identified? So that is critically important. We need every family to do that every day. And I know that is a burden. And then once the kids get to the school, the thing I forgot to say is you should take your temperature, your child's temperature every day. But as a safety, we have to have staff out in front of the school lined up with kids coming off the buses socially distanced and take their temperatures. Okay, we have identified staff in every building to do that, which would include a mixing of instructional and non-instructional staff. However, it would be a big help to us if we knew that that screening was being done every day. And we'll follow up with temperature checks when the kids get there. As you can imagine, that is a logistical challenge. And that may slow down the ability of kids to get into school as well as the opportunities for the buses to leave the high school, go to the middle school and go to the elementary school. We don't anticipate huge differences in the start times of our schools. We think we have a pretty good handle on it. It may vary five to 10 minutes from what we're used to typically in the first few weeks of school. Due to the delays, it varies five to 10 minutes anyways. But Mr. Noah thinks we have a good handle on it. The attendance requirement, some have asked about the attendance requirement, right? The state education department regulations say that we have to take attendance. It says to be flexible about that, but we need to record it. So it's not going to be a situation that if your child is in remote learning and they don't, they don't assign into a Google classroom at 7:35, they're marked absent. Somewhere during the day, through Google, we will be asking for the teachers to mark who attended and who participated. In order to be eligible for state aid, which is critically important now, as we don't have a lot of extra resources, that attendance will be handled by the teacher through very, for various tools that are available in Google. Visitor policy. Our schools were designed to be welcoming, our schools were designed to welcome the community in. But we will have to enforce a very strict visitor policy for our parents, for our outside groups and our vendors. We're encouraging parents to remind your kids not to forget things, right? Because you may not be able to come into the school and drop them off, right? We will have procedures that you can leave items in the vestibule. And we will have staff to be able to take care of those needs. But we're encouraging as few visits to the building as possible. And we will not be permitting outside groups, such as our sports groups and other groups, to use the facilities, at least for a while. We have to do that because in the event that we do have a suspected case of COVID-19, we're going to have to take our steps, our direction from the Rensselaer County Department of Health, who is responsible for the contact tracing. They will tell us what we need to do in the event that we have a student suspected of a case or a staff member suspected of a case. And the fewer people we have in the building, the, the, the smaller the risk of exposure, the fewer contacts, the fewer efforts that we need to make during the contact tracing process. Where we can, we'll have windows open and doors open to allow fresh air. We have a company, some of you may be familiar with Train. Train is a company that does engineering and mechanical work on our HVAC systems. Mr. Bickel has arranged for Train to do an air quality assessment, an AQI assessment of every single ventilator, every single filter in our buildings. And that will be done by September. In the event that the, the level of fresh air could be increased, we are going to increase it. In the event that the filters are not working properly, we're going to change them and replace them. In some cases, we may have to, depending on what the report says, implement some of the MERV or get the number of MERV filters that were required of the malls before they opened. I call them the MERV Griffin filters, but I don't know exactly what they're, what they're called. So you may be too young to remember MERV Griffin. But we are going to do everything possible to make sure the HVAC systems are working. Face coverings must be worn at all times. Students will be separated on buses. I talked about that. Household members may be assigned the same seats on the bus. Windows and roof hatches will be open to allow fresh air in. Buses will operate on a staggered schedule. They will all be pulling into the high school circle at once like they've done. They'll be coming in, staging, dropping kids off. Kids will be greeted by staff. Staff will be doing temperature checks. Kids will be coming into the building six feet apart. We will have to move away from our single point of entry. We will have to have multiple entrances where kids are coming in to reduce the volume, make sure that the temperature checks can be done and to implement the social distancing. And we will have training videos for our staff, prepared by Quests, our BOSsies and our families and our kids. So everybody knows how to implement the sanitation procedures, how to wear a mask properly and other procedures that we need to, to take. Signage has been ordered. There is some signage in place already. Signage helps us to help the kids remember social distancing. Where to stand as you're coming in the cafeteria, there'll be tape on the floors. The, there will be direction arrows in our larger schools, such as our high school and our middle school. So kids may not be able to go any which way from period one to period two. They may have to go a certain way to make sure that they are traveling in more designated areas. Again, that goes along with the contact tracing and the minimization of contact. These are some examples of some signs. Teaching and learning, I think Mr. McHugh is on the meeting. I'm going to summarize this, and if he wants to add anything, he certainly can. We talked about K-12 students guaranteed in-person time from their teachers. I really, I really feel strongly that the social interaction for all of our kids is critically important. I really feel in particular that as kids get older, and we have talked about this for four years now, the social emotional needs of our children may change. the social emotional needs of our children may change as they move from elementary school to middle school to high school. I know that our middle schoolers and our high schools are really eager to have more social contact. And in some cases, our kids are really, really struggled in the spring. Not only at the elementary level, but the middle and the high school level. We'll have social distancing requirements within our space constraints. But we will have three days of live instruction, the virtual live instruction day and the two in-person days. And we will have smaller in-person classes that personalize the learning for the kids and enable our teachers to perhaps catch some kids up who missed some concepts last year and differentiate and challenge some kids that may need the challenges. The in-person remote and the virtual live teaching complement one another. We are not reducing any courses and/or program offerings to accomplish the safety guidance. And we are implementing grading that is fairly consistent with the grading policies that we have had prior to the March closure. And report cards will be issued. Special education, here you go, Molly. Yeah, come on up. Ms. McGrath is our director of special education, and she can explain this much better than I can.
Thank you. So students with disabilities who require highly specialized program, programming, which would be a full-day special class, and they're listed right here. There are communication skills program, language concepts transitions. And those classes are offered K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8. And then our academic skills class, our life skills class, CTAP and operation graduation. So these students will attend in-person instruction Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and participate in the live virtual instruction on Wednesday. So students with disabilities who participate in less restrictive programming, such as integrated co-teach or consultant teacher model or one period of special class, will follow the same hybrid model as their general education peers. So a frequently asked questioner, why aren't special education students attending in-person five days? Excellent. Oh, I don't, I don't have the clicker. Oh. Next one, please. That's okay. So, one back. On Wednesdays, there will be a strong emphasis on scaffold instruction as well as guided practice in the use of instructional technology to support students to transition between in-person and remote instruction. Because we know this group of students has more significant learning needs and struggled with the remote learning from March to June. So we want time to have two days in person, teach how to use the instructional technology on your Chromebook. This is your application. This is your extension. On Wednesday, time to practice with support of the teacher from the classroom. And then return to program Thursday, Friday to reteach, reinforce, and make sure our students are proficient with the technology. Related services, OTPT speech and counseling will be scheduled and prioritized on the students' in-person days to the best of our ability. And listed, will be following the frequency which are listed in the IEPs. So individualized determinations will be made through the committee on special education, whether or not and to what extent compensatory services are needed. So when we return to program, we'll have time in person with our students to do the assessments and figure out, you know, what skills they missed, where they need extra support, and how to best deliver that extra support. You know?
So the district has a number of students who require English as a new language service. We have increased the number of students over the years who require that service. And we have a great staff that provides English as a second language, or English as a new language, as it's called now. Those students will receive the level of instruction that is required by the federal regulations and the state procedures through a screening process. And those services will be delivered to children when they are participating in person and when they are participating remotely through the hybrid approach. We have to be in compliance with those regulations as well as make sure that those children are engaged in the service. But also, we are required to make sure that communications that we provide our families are transcribed into the language, to the home language. And we have services in place to do that. Digital equity and access. We recognize, and we spoke to this earlier, that there may be some areas that don't have Wi-Fi or inconsistent Wi-Fi connectivity. Mr. Goodwin and the technologies department have information on where we believe those families might need extra help. We're in the process of purchasing the Verizon, what do they call it, Peter? MiFi's and other equipment that would be necessary to provide. There's a perception that if a K-1 student doesn't have a personal device, that we won't provide it. That's not true. We're trying to do what we can to purchase equipment if needed. But we don't currently have enough devices to give to everybody, but we're working through that. We've come a long way in the last three years with our technology program through our lighthouse one-to-one program, and we're continuing to build on it. But nobody should worry that they don't have internet access or equipment to be able to connect to the Rome, the, the remote learning or the virtual learning. We will take care of that. We've talked about most of the transportation. The one thing that we haven't emphasized is that the buses will be cleaned in between routes. And our transportation department has a way to do that. And the buses will also be disinfected daily. Facilities will follow all required practices. We talked about most of these, including cleaning and disinfecting, the HVAC system. In the event that a student is demonstrating symptoms in our school of COVID-19, every building is required to have an isolation room, and that isolation room will need to be staffed. And we will have to contact the parent and the child will have to go home. Additionally, we are, for the first time, I believe, in a while, offering a summer nutrition program. We applied for approval to do that, and we were authorized to do that for students who may need lunch. We're required by the new regulations to make sure that whether a student is attending in person or a student is attending remote, that they have a lunch if they need it. We're setting up a process on the website for families to be able to order what is needed. We prefer that families pick up as they did at Red Mill and DPS in the spring. However, we do have a limited number of drivers who are able to during the middle of day deliver lunches. It may be a system whereby we are providing two days' worth of meals twice a week. But we're still working through that. And Phyllis Sanford and her staff have been remarkable. We will have safety procedures as kids are coming. We'll have reduced capacity in the cafeteria. So even though we have half the kids in our school, we will still have less kids in the cafeteria spaced out. In some buildings, we may have to have kids eating lunch in the cafeteria and in classrooms. We will have to work with our employees on how to staff that situation with monitors and teaching assistants. The human resources considerations. Marissa Cannon, who's here, has done a really great job at implementing all of the requirements related to staff training. We have a health screening system in place that I mentioned that we're going to extend to families that are employees that are working in the summer every day. They do the health screening that's available on your phone. It probably takes seven seconds to do the screening, and then we get a data report. All employees are wearing face coverings in our buildings. I'm going to ask the board to create a position called COVID-19 coordinator. Districts are required to have an identified COVID-19 coordinator. And that person should be a licensed medical professional who has a background in such areas as nursing. We want to be able to employ a nurse to help us on a district-wide basis, work with the myriad of issues that may come up and procedural questions that may come up related to COVID-19. Somebody who can interface with Dr. Albert, our school physician, interface with our administrators and our staff and our families. In the event that something happens and we need to be able to respond quickly and thoroughly to a situation, we want to have somebody who is designated to coordinate. That person will also help with modifying procedures, interpreting temperature checks, looking at issues that might be individualized for particular families who may need accommodations, and help us to implement the requirements. We also, the district is still under the obligation to not only teach the curriculum, but implement the state's evaluation requirements, which include our teacher and principal evaluation plan. We will be able to do that because there will be both more in-person learning and our staff will be coming in every day to be able to meet those planned requirements. And importantly, as I mentioned early on, and maybe if you joined the meeting late, we do have a process to ensure that families who want to talk with us about an option for full remote instruction, bring that issue to our attention by contacting our principals. And we will look at the issues on a case-by-case basis. We will look at specific needs of the children, but we also have a process to accommodate specific concerns of our staff. We sent a letter out from Ms. Cannon's office, the director of human resources, on Monday to our staff that if any individuals have a concern about returning to work, they should contact Ms. Cannon. And we are under both federal and state regulations to make sure that we accommodate kids and we accommodate staff. And we will honor those requirements. This is an example of the employee health screening tool. I mentioned the questions that were there. I don't think I missed any. The symptoms are described. The questions are pretty clear. Put your name, first name and last name in, in an email, and it gets done within a matter of seven seconds. Social emotional needs, we talked about that. We have a specific committee headed by Helen Scalachi, our principal at Red Mill, with our, with our, to look at the social emotional needs that our kids might be presenting as they return to school. We've talked about the fact that nationwide, one in every four, five children has some type of identified mental health issue. Those issues for some kids may have become more serious and more concerning due to the COVID-19 concerns, the shutdown of our schools and shift to remote learning, and some of the stuff going on that has impacted our kids on a national level. We think there are some kids that are experiencing trauma. Additionally, we want to orient our kids back to learning. And that means that we may not put as much academic pressure or accountability on the kids initially. We want them to be back with their friends. We want to be back with their teachers. We want them to be able to adjust slowly back into school. And that is another benefit to not having as many kids on campus at one time. Not only the procedures, but the need for the kids to socially emotionally adjust to being back in school with their teachers and their friends. And we want to orient them to make sure that the social workers, the counselors and the teachers are aware of any kids who have any issues. And it may be an adjustment. It may be an adjustment for a child who typically has had no issues with coming to school. It's been a very, very traumatic spring for many kids. There's also, there's also been some learning that's occurred from it for which we can help transition the kids back successfully. I talked about childcare. For those of you who might be joining us late, we're working with GCC. We're working with the YMCA. We're trying to identify community sites. And we're trying to make sure that we have full-day options available in the community. And we're trying to put in place some academic support so the kids, if they have to attend childcare, would be able to have teaching assistant support or other types of support to help the remote learning program. These would be licensed childcare providers. And we're also going to incentivize some of our high school kids to take the Red Cross babysitting course by paying for the, paying for the registration fee. Again, to emphasize, if families have concerns about their children returning to school, please contact your building principal as soon as possible. We want to know who those children are, who those families are that need it, so that we can put in place an appropriate option. Next steps, we're going to have two more community meetings, August 5th and August 13th. Those meetings may change. I have an agenda planned for those meetings. It may change somewhere between August 1st and August 7th. We may find out something different that we didn't suspect come from our governor. We will respond appropriately. And then, right now, the first day of school is scheduled for September 8th. There have been discussions among districts about potentially changing the school's schedule and having the first day start later. We really haven't had thorough discussions of that within our committee. But I do want to make you aware that that is a discussion that is occurring in some districts. I don't know at this point whether we would change it or not. We haven't thought fully through it. So with that being said, I know it was a long presentation, but it is a complicated task involving many moving parts and variables. I appreciate everybody's patience. I hope that those of you that are watching from home aren't asleep as a result of my presentation. And we want to go to Mrs. Wager in just a little bit after Mr. Buno moves us to public comment. And we will try to respond to various topics in public comment that we may not have addressed. But please be assured that this email process gives us the ability to either respond personally to you in an email, and I will review these tomorrow, emails that you send in. But I will also have Mr. Adam, who is our public information officer, review the topics. And if we need to update the frequently asked questions document, that'll be populated back out on our website again tomorrow. I appreciate everybody's patience. And I'll take questions from the board or concerns from the board at this time regarding the plan.
Okay, we'll open it up to the floor. Any questions we want to pose now, or we could go to the public forum? I'm sure some of those same questions are going to be asked through the email process. But I'll give the board an opportunity to ask something, anything right now, if they would like to, or we can move right to the public forum. Lot of information, lot to digest, very comprehensive, very detailed. I want to thank the task force and Mr. Simons and everyone involved with the process to develop this preliminary plan. And then to engage the community in the process of hearing their concerns based on the plan and then how we can best move forward from there. So I can start with the board. I'll open it up. Anyone at this point? Not yet? Okay. So why don't we move to the public forum, Mr. Simons? And so as we, or indicated earlier, I'll read the public forum blurb, as I call it, for these discussions. And then, as Mr. Simons indicated, we have a dedicated email that a lot of folks are taking advantage of. And we'll probably try to do is summarize those on a consistent basis. And if we can't get to things, we'll address those individually, as Mr. Simon says. Residents, students, employees and business representatives of the East Greenwood Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and their operations in the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns in the public forum. If response is appropriate, the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. And that would be important to make sure that happens in the email. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protection, it must be stressed that the visitors forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board present will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks would be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited, declared out of order. Because we don't have any direct comment, we will, we have an email process. And how are we doing, Linda? Do we have some?
We're good. Are we all set?
I think we are.
Okay.
So what we'd like to do is kind of hear some of the issues and concerns. I think that would be the best way. How many did you capture in terms of like a?
We received 43 emails. And the majority of those came prior to Mr. Simon's presentation.
Okay.
So there is a lot of repeat here. But the two main topics, the first one is the availability for the option for a full remote learning and questions about, did we survey families?
There is an option for, for remote learning. And that option is, can be accessed by calling or emailing your child's building principal of the school that you're assigned. And then the principal will hear what the concerns are and talk to me about it. And we will be making a list of kids by grade level and building. And then working with both our own staff, who may have the ability to be matched up with kids to provide that remote learning. And I mentioned that we will be working through Questar Bosse's on a model that may enable teachers from other districts and students from other districts to participate together. One thing I will say, just so that I'm, I'm clear upfront about this, you may not, and you will likely not get the child's teacher that would be assigned to you if you were in in-person. So for example, if you're going in the second grade at Bell Top and you're expecting and you're expecting to have one of the Belltop teachers for second grade, that option would not be available if that teacher is teaching in person. It will be a certified teacher, but it won't be your child's building teacher at that grade level, and that's just logistically not, we're not able to do that and able, and be able to implement the in-person instruction that we need. But it will be a certified teacher. And in the event that we are able to successfully pull together a program with BOSI's, it may be a teacher from another district, but it'll still be a teacher, a certified teacher. And there will be oversight of the program through my office and the BOSI's.
Thanks, Mr. Simons.
The next topic that was asked about is full-time K-5 in-person learning. There are many concerns over the attention span of our young learners, the lack of childcare, and that these early years are critical to learning for reading and writing. That is why a lot of people feel there should be full-time K-5 in-person learning.
The, the model for delivering remote instruction and virtual live instruction is different at the elementary school level than it would be at the middle school or the high school level. We don't anticipate kids sitting all day in an elementary, on an elementary remote experience engaged for six and a half hours at a computer screen. We have some exceptionally engaging elementary teachers. And during the period of remote instruction, we had some elementary teachers who started their teaching at seven o'clock in the morning and ended it at nine o'clock at night. And one of the reasons they were doing that was because they were differentiating for individual kids. They were pulling together kids in small groups through group, through Google meets, and they were organizing their electronic instruction in ways that were similar to what they would be doing in the classroom. So there might be situations at the elementary level where the whole class is brought together for a Google meet. But there will also be experiences where kids may be engaging in small group projects with certain group of kids with the teacher. And there will also be situations where the, the ability of the teacher to be able to pull in another professional into a, into a Google meet, such as a speech therapist or a reading teacher will occur. So the kids won't be engaged all day on the computer screen. We leave it to some of the professional discretion of the teachers to select various options to engage the kids. And the one thing I would say, you know, we already talked about the childcare issue, which is critically important. I understand, and we're trying to work on some solutions to that, is that the in-person learning that the children will get two days a week will support any activities that the children need to do independently on the computer. And there will be a parent communication component to this. And if we can get in place some academic support at the, that, that could be accessed at childcare, I believe that the learning experiences of the elementary children will be very engaging and beneficial. The issues aren't all worked out. I'll be quite honest about it. There is always the ability, as we move into this situation, that the state situation could evolve positively, that social distancing and other procedural restrictions could be loosened. I don't anticipate that that happening within the first semester. It could, and in the event that we are able to accommodate increases in in-person learning for the elementary kids, that will be our first priority.
There are questions, Mr. Simons, about our PPE supplies. Will the district be providing face shields for all staff and students? And will there be a requirement for students and staff to wear masks full-time?
The staff is required to wear masks full-time. In some cases, some staff will be wearing both masks and shields. That is in the case of the nurses, particularly if the nurses are in need of that and responding to children that may have symptoms. In some cases, our summer school nurses, for example, were requested shields and masks and gowns and gloves, and we were able to get those to them. There are services that require children to see your face and see your mouth, such as Speech and Language Services. Okay? Such as English as a New Language. Those professionals would be issued shields for when they are working with the students. Additionally, there are some situations with our kitchen staff. You know, if a kitchen staff member is reaching down to pull something hot out of the oven and they're, they, they may not, they may need both a mask and a shield. In some situations, they would wear the shield, and in some situations, they would wear the mask, and Phil has brought that to my attention today. We're having some discussions about reading and the possibility of reading teachers, particularly at the early elementary level, having shields as well. But in general, the regulation says they have to wear a face cloth. But in certain specialized fields, we'll be, we'll have the shields. We have shields now. We are ordering and have received more shields. We have cloth masks now. We have N95 masks now. We are in the process of, those orders have been submitted. The other thing I would say is the State Education Department sent all school districts a form to fill out that had recommended levels of PPE per thousand students for quantities of students that Ms. Wager, our Director of Business Finance, filled out. And the State Education Department is working with the New York State Office of General Services to be able to negotiate with vendors, large group bulk pricing, as I understand it. Those districts would not be provided that PPE for free, but we would have the benefit of state contract pricing. And we are taking advantage of every, every vendor, every opportunity we have to access the PPE. And we also coordinate with BOSI's, Craig Hansen from BOSI's Health and Safety, and the Rensselaer County Health Department for accessing PPE and their Emergency Response Department.
Thank you. Have we considered setting up tents to provide extra classroom space?
Tents are permitted to be set up for extra classroom space. Those tents require approval of the New York State Education Department Office of Facilities. Those tents would be temporary, as they would not necessarily be good for utilization once the weather turns bad, typically in October. Anything like that is required to be approved by SED. We haven't made an arrangement for those tents because at this point our model doesn't require it, and we believe that that would only be a short-term option. We don't anticipate that the first marking period, if you think about it, kids come back in September, October, weather starts to get bad around Halloween. Those might not be suitable for outdoor instruction anytime in, in late, late October, early November. It is an option that you could consider if you don't have any other options.
Could you review the procedures in the event that we have a positive COVID case?
I'll bet, I will review the procedures, but I want to share that I didn't share with everybody is since March 13th, through Questar BOSI's, East Greenwood School District Superintendent myself and all the district superintendents have met, sometimes weekly, with the Rensselaer County Executive, Steve McLaughlin, and the Director of Health, the Health Department. Sometimes three days a week. We have a regular standing meeting that we have weekly now, which we coordinate with the Department of Health, and we have relationships that existed in our county prior to COVID, which are serving us very well. So, you know, we have Mary Fran Wakunas on a first-name basis, and we work with her. She's the Director of Health. So procedurally, the nurses, the administrators of the school, and other staff will have a document with numbers to call in the event that there is a symptomatic child. The first step is to call the Department of Health and report the information regarding the child. First step is to quarantine the child in an isolation room, make arrangements for them to go home as you're calling the Department of Health. The Department of Health will issue guidance and direction to the school district. Early in March, when the standards were put in place, the direction to the schools was, if you do have, this is before we closed, if you do have a confirmed case, you have to close down the school building. That is no longer the direction. The direction is call the Department of Health, and we will guide you through what you need to do. And the Department of Health will coordinate the contact tracing. So there is no hard and fast rule if a student in the class, for example, has a confirmed case that we follow. We call the Department of Health. It could likely include options such as providing information regarding every student that was in the class, every staff member that was in the class, every area that a student may have went into in the school, who was in contact with that student. They will guide us through what to do. They may direct us to close the class and shift that class to remote. And they may direct us to have the teacher not report to work. There's no, there's no, and there are windows of time through which the contact tracing is done. Who is that, for example, who was that person in contact with during the last X period? I'm going back. So it's a contact tracing process directed by the Department of Health. There's no automatic shutdown rules for the schools in place right now or shutting down the class. But the student would have to stay home at a minimum for the 14 days or until further seen by a medical physician and cleared by the Department of Health. Our Department of Health has been amazing. The situations that we call them about, they know about. One thing that has been told to us is we may have staff, and we may have family situations where a parent may live in Albany County and another parent may live in Rensselaer County. The counties are responsible for the contact tracing, so we may have situations where there's a need to reach out to both counties or to make sure that the counties are coordinating. I know that was a long-winded answer, but it's an important one.
Thank you. There are questions about, will the bus drivers have sufficient time to clean the buses, not just spray the buses? And will the windows have to be open?
They're wiping down the seats with bleach, bleach solution that is approved by the CDC in between runs, and they are disinfecting every night. And the windows will be open as, as required to provide fresh air, even in the event that it may be a little inclement. And then, I think it's if it's 40 degrees or higher, the windows have to be open.
Okay. How often will this plan be reviewed? Is it possible that the number of in-person days could increase if the results stay low?
The answer to the second part of that question is yes. I hope it does. I want it to, and it's going to be reviewed daily because we are in constant contact with our principals and our staff, and it'll be, as we're implementing it, we'll be reviewing it. So there'll be things that are working immediately, and there'll be things that need to be adjusted. It's a fluid plan to respond to circumstances.
Will students have the option to opt out of special classes such as music and band?
We haven't made that determination yet. Where we, I received today a proposal from the Music Department. I have not had time to review it regarding how they feel band and orchestra and chorus can be delivered, and I haven't had a chance to review it yet. But we have very good music teachers and the department chair who's exceptional, and we're, we're hoping to be able to review all of those issues, and we'll keep the public informed about that.
Great. Going back to the bus issue, there are questions about why are the temperatures being taken at school? What about if a child gets on the bus and is sick? Is there a possibility that the temperatures can be taken before students get on the bus?
We talked about that earlier. The issue, there are two issues with that. Having enough staff to be able to do those temperatures at the bus stop before the child gets on the bus. We don't have sufficient staff for approximately 2,000 kids coming in every day on the buses. And the requirement says, I'll step back. We wish we could do that because we think that that would be the best way to do it. But one of the problems would be if a child's parent is not home and they're waiting at the bus stop with a neighbor or with a neighbor's child, we don't know what the mechanism would be to ensure that the parent can bring that child safely back into the house, monitor the situation, and the bus is, the bus driver's driving the bus, and there's kids on the bus, and there's kids at the stop. So we can't be sure that we could respond to that situation safely. So we're going to rely on the parents to do the screening and the temperature checks before the child comes to school, and we will recheck the temperatures when the kids come in.
Great.
They will not, they will be isolated if they have 100-degree fever or more.
Okay, so when students come to school, especially some of the younger students, sometimes they have a headache or a stomach ache, and they're, they may just be hungry. What is our protocol? And will, will a student automatically be sent home? And who will make the decision if a student must have a COVID test?
If a child is reporting a stomach ache, the child would be evaluated by the nurse. And if there were no other issues, the nurse will make her medical professional judgment as to whether or not she suspects that the symptoms might be related to COVID-19. We would rely on our nurses to do that. She may check in with the new COVID-19 coordinator and the nurse coordinator to determine, to get a second set of eyes on it. And she will, she will inform her immediate supervisor, which would be the principal of the building. Principal in coordination with the nurse would determine whether the child has to go home or not. The County Department of Health makes a determination as to whether or not a, or the physician makes the determination as to whether they get a COVID-19 test. So child goes home with a stomach ache, may have a fever. The first thing we want the parent to do is to call their primary care provider. And once their primary care provider evaluates the child, he may, or she may call the County Health Department as required by, and they will, they will talk about whether a COVID-19 test would have to be. The school does not make that call. The school cannot make that call.
There are several questions and concerns about the remote learning days. And it appears to be at all levels, parents are asking, what will those remote learning days look like?
At the middle school and the high school level, different from the spring, students will follow their schedule as if they were in in-person learning. So if, if first period, they have social studies, and second period, they have math, and third period, they have science, and fourth period, they have gym, they'll have that remotely. Okay? The option exists for middle school and high school teachers to propose some alternatives that might be able to pull kids together in small groups or be able to address kids who might have the same learning needs. So if, if, I'll take a math example. If there's a particular skill in math that needs to be re-taught because the kids didn't get it, the teacher could have the discretion to say, you know what? Fourth period math, I'm not going to meet with all my kids today. I'm just going to meet with those kids who need that instruction and that skill. But it'll be much more structured and organized around the building's master schedule for the children than it was in the spring, keeping in mind that our teachers are coming into the building and delivering the instruction from the building. At the elementary level, it'll be a little bit different. It'll be differentiated by the teacher with a combination of whole-group instruction and individual instruction and other types of mixing and matching of kids. So we don't expect the elementary kids to be sitting at the computer all day long. The elementary teachers, through grade-level meetings, will develop more information and communication about what that elementary model will look like, but it'll be a lot more structured than it was. And people, people are associating remote learning to an emergency situation in the spring where we had to shut down and teachers had to teach from home. And we, we made marked improvements along the way, although it wasn't perfect in the spring. We've had the opportunity to reflect on what happened last spring, and now we have a structure in place that we think that will work much better in terms of predictability for the students, predictability for the teachers. We don't want the looseness of the schedule that some of our middle school and high school kids experienced last year.
Are the cohorts of students being decided alphabetically? And what are we doing about trying to keep siblings together?
That's a great question. We're working on that now, we meaning the principals and Maui, Special Ed Director, and Mark Knoll at the Transportation. So I don't know whether it's going to be alphabetical or not. It may be at the high school, and it may be at the middle school. But both at the high school and the middle school, all three grade levels are planned to come in at the same time because some teachers teach sixth and seventh grade. Some teachers at the high school, for example, teach. Some teachers at the high school, for example, teach ninth grade courses, 11th grade courses. So you, we will have half of the total of ninth graders through 12th graders on A days and the other half on B days. It'll be nine through 12, all four grade levels in the building. And the same will be true of the three grade levels at the middle school. How it will be organized is a combination of family groupings. We're trying to group the families together so that siblings are, if, if, Johnny's in third grade and his older brother is in seventh grade and his older sister is a junior in high school. We want to try to provide the same schedule of A, B days for all three of those students at the level. So family groupings could influence whether or not the schedule is alphabetical. Once we do the family groupings, it's, why we, Mr. Nowitz wishes that bus stops, bus neighborhoods were organized by A and B days. They're not. So he has to design transportation routes that pick up the A kids and pick up the B kids that are efficient and within the social distancing, 22 kids on a 66 passenger bus. That's not a rule, but that's what we're doing. So it's a blending of those factors that enable the transportation to occur smoothly and the family groupings to occur and the 50% or fewer kids in the building at one time. Ideally, we would be organized, obviously, by having similar grade levels in the building at the same time, like a primary and a intermediate. But we don't know that yet. Principals are working on that. We will be assigning the groupings and sending them to the parents the week of August 17. And when the parents receive that, if there's any problems, first step is to contact the building principal and we'll try to work with you and work it out.
Great. can we address attendance monitoring?
Yep.
And the grading system? If we have to go to full remote, will we go back to pass fail?
Our plan is to stick with more traditional grading system that has been in place in accordance with board policy.
And attendance monitoring?
Attendance monitoring will be through, likely through the participation in Google classrooms and/or Google meets, whichever Google tool is, the teachers will know who's in attendance. We're organizing, behind the scenes and sort of the technology aspect of this, we're organizing our master schedule around A and B days. That's not easy. It's never been done before. It's, it will enable the students to be scheduled on an attendance list coded by class and coded by whether you're here on an A data. So if I'm teaching social studies, I might get my third period list. And my third period list might include both my A kids and my B kids. But they're marked somehow so that I know that the A kids are here because they're supposed to be here and these are the B kids. They're not absent, they're just in remote. So we're working on a system to be able to track that.
Okay. As far as cleaning goes, if the older students are changing classes, will their desks be cleaned in between classes?
In some cases, we will be doing that. In other cases, we haven't come up with a solution for that. We're working on that.
Will the elementary students be able to use the playgrounds?
Yes. The regulations require the, don't require the playgrounds to be disinfected between groups of kids using the playground. That's my understanding.
As far as nutrition goes, could you review those needing to receive meals, how they'll receive them? And then a follow-up along those same lines is a comment was made that in our plan, we have 20-minute lunch periods and some concerns that that's not long enough.
Okay.
So two parts.
I'll have to talk with Phyllis Sanford about the 20-minute lunch periods. I, I, I think that that was an intention to try to reduce the number of kids in the cafeteria at any one time and to move kids back into their groupings. I don't know that that 20-minute rule will be able to be followed in every building. It could be more, it could be less. So I think that was just basically a guideline and the principals are still reviewing those procedures. The other part was how, how would the meals be accessed?
Yes.
During the spring, we had pickup sites at Red Mill and we had a site at DPS. And we would encourage as many families who have transportation or the ability to pick up on remote days to pick up the lunches. But we do have a mechanism for delivery. And that would be use of our drivers during the middle of the day. And the process will be all online and there'll be also a phone number to call if you need a delivery.
And will we be operating our backpack program?
Yes. It may not be to the scale that Mr. Leonard is operating it right now, but there will be some community options.
Okay. There was a question about, do you believe that our federal funding will be dependent on students returning in person?
I don't know. I've heard speculation regarding that. And the event that that occurs, typically what happens is the state decides how those federal monies would be spent and distributed to schools within the parameters established by the federal government. So there could be a, and this is speculation on my part, I don't have any more information than anybody else. There could be a situation where federal monies and state standards don't match. And then that would be an issue that the state would have to resolve in order to receive those federal funds and distribute them to the schools. For example, I watch the national news like everyone does and I heard an interview with the Tennessee Department of Education Commissioner. And the state of Tennessee has taken a very different approach to reopening schools than New York is. So sometimes it's confusing to figure out what the state guidelines are because they vary by state. The national guidance could come out and say, if you, if schools need this money or want this money, it has to involve in-person learning. And if the state were to turn around and, and say, there's a criteria for receiving this money and if East Green Bush was in jeopardy of not receiving money, would make adjustments to make sure that we had that resource.
Okay.
Sometimes the state in the past has used federal monies to offset cuts instead of provide additional money. So we're told by the governor right now, if we don't get federal funds, I'm going to cut money school age 20%, which is $3.4 million. East Green Bush, they may take that federal money and say, well, we're keeping you whole. We're not going to give you anything additional, but we're going to fill the cut that we otherwise would have made with the federal money. And there might be particular rules. But that has happened in the past during different, different economic situations that have affected schools.
We're asked to go back to the students who are going to the nurses with stomach aches. And what about those students who have anxiety and repeatedly say they have a stomach ache? Will they be sent home?
A stomach ache in and of itself is the understanding. And I'm not a medical expert, doesn't necessarily mean you have COVID-19. A lot of kids come to school with stomach aches and nervous about coming back to school and, and after a period of time, they get better. So we leave it to the discretion of the nurse. The nurse will take the temperature as well.
Will the high school students be able to drive to school like they did last year?
That is the plan as of this point. We haven't had a thorough discussion of that.
Okay.
Mr. Harkonnen, I.
Could you talk about the measuring air quality again? And do we have plans for updating our HVAC systems or installing better filters?
We have done some work this spring. And in the Capitol project that was approved a few years ago to address various issues with HVAC, there's a new chiller system at the cloth middle school, for example. We work with Train, which is a private contracted firm that specializes in the mechanical and electrical and functioning of both temperature control systems and HVAC units. We've asked Train to come in and evaluate every building's current fresh air level within their HVAC systems to evaluate the filters, to make sure that they're functioning. And they're apparently, I'm not an engineer, but there is a way to increase, as I understand it, the fresh air coming into the spaces. If that can be done in a way that doesn't result in any mechanical issues for the system, we will be doing that and we will be evaluating each filter to make sure it's been changed, which are on the schedule, they're on a regular schedule anyways to change the filters. And the event that we need the more filters that catch more contaminants to make the system operate better, we'll put those in. The challenge with those are they catch more contaminants, therefore they wear out more frequently. Therefore, they cost, we use a lot more and they're a lot more expensive. So that's not a requirement. That's something we're doing above and beyond to make sure that the kids and staff are safe.
Since we do have the option of full-time remote learning, will families also have the option to opt out of that and come back into either in-person or hybrid? At any point?
Oh, you mean to, once you're in it, okay. Yes, but we will have to have some time, some established guidelines regarding that. Because we, it would have to be, for example, a system that would enable the district to plan for that additional student and have the space within the ratio. So it might be a marking period by marking period option. It could be a 10-week type of an option. We haven't established those parameters yet. We want to wait and see how many kids would want, and families would want that for a remote option to what, what the volume would be in the event that kids at various levels, families said, well, we feel comfortable now having your child come back. We want them back. And in-person learning, we'll just have to have some kind of rules for it. We can't, we can't do it on a week-by-week basis or a day-by-day basis.
And can you confirm that the Chromebooks will be going to school and home with the students?
I can't, maybe Mr. Goodwin can.
Repeat the question for me.
Will the Chromebooks be going back and forth? Okay. The answer is yes. I don't know if Mr. Goodman had a microphone.
Okay, great. There's just a, and I do have to note a comment. This was not a question, but there's been many comments about K5, the need for K5 in-person. And there are secondary parents that are saying, please remember that elementary students have time to catch up on curriculum and the high schoolers are planning for college and so they don't have that benefit of time.
We, we have emphasized in our plan equity for all kids and we want to, we want to make sure that our elementary children, our middle school children and our high school children are all taken care of. And while there may be different factors involved in making sure that the academic and social emotional development of the kids varies by elementary versus middle school or high school, they're all important. They're all important and we're all one district, we're all one community and all of our kids matter. And, and the fact is that those high school considerations are important for our kids. And one of the things we wrote into the plan is we have to give consideration to those juniors and seniors in particular who are making their post-graduation plans. I know the kids want to get back together at the high school though, and they all do. But I know the kids in particular at the middle school and high school are, are, most of them are eager to get back. For the reasons you, the parents have cited.
This, just a question that just came in that says, I'm concerned with the fact that not all of the COVID patients have a temperature. We keep emphasis on temperature, which is good. But what about those that spread and do not have a temperature or symptoms? Is this not a risk to all staff and students?
As I said, I, again, I'm not a medical expert and I defer medical expert to the medical experts, such as the Department of Health and our school physician. And the masks and the social distancing are the cautions that we are required to take for all children, all staff and the spacing. I can't stand up in front of anybody, nor can any superintendent in America say that a child or a staff member won't get COVID-19 by coming to school. I can tell you that we will follow the guidelines as prescribed by the Department of Health and try to exceed them. I don't know enough, nor do I think anybody knows enough about asymptomatic spread. I have heard a number of different reports about that and read a number of different reports. But the Department of Health has reviewed all of those issues and created guidelines for us and we're going to, we're going to follow them. But I, I can't say that asymptomatic spread is a concern or not a concern because there's very, there seems to be varying opinions about that across our country.
Linda, how many more questions? No, it's okay. I just want to make sure that because it's topics are covered and they're.
There's a couple more that are coming in now.
Because we do have the forums that are coming up in the next couple of weeks too.
Okay.
It'll take a couple more.
I'll give you two more then. For students who are struggling and they need extra help, will they be able to get that?
Yes, and there are varying ways that kids can get extra help. I think the first step is if your child is struggling, talk to the teacher. Then talk to the principal. There are ways that we can arrange extra things. We just need to know what the problem is. It could be, or it could be a range of things. It could be some, some extra tutoring. It could be some extra time put in by a teacher. It could be a different instructional approach. Yes.
Last question. First, thank you for this meeting. It's been very helpful. My question is that with all these changes, are the school supply lists going to change?
Likely.
It's a big question for parents, right?
I don't know what will be on those lists.
Sharing won't be.
But, but the sharing of materials and personal items will be reduced. It's almost like it's a situation where the district may have to buy individual items, give them to the kids, mark them for the kids and not have anybody share them, you know? I was a second grade teacher and in second grade, these teachers have the kids sit at tables, in groups of four, and have them share materials so they get to work together as a team. Propertive learning, okay, project-based learning. Our project-based learning will shift to remote. But we have to do everything opposite of what we've been told to do for the last 20 years. We have to have kids sitting in rows at desks by themselves facing the board. And when some of us went to school, that's exactly what we did. And for 20 years, we were told that may not engage the kids as much as having them all sit around the table, share materials and work together on a project together. But we can't do that right now. So we're back to the old ways to keep the kids healthy and safe.
There are students looking to find out how to sign up for the babysitting course.
Awesome. Okay, we have great kids and that's one of the reasons we have put it out there. We are going to send a link and a story about this to all of the parents tomorrow. There'll be a link on, there'll be a contact on our website. Who is a clerical employee in our Director of Business and Finance, Linda Wager's office, who has agreed to take all of the students who are interested in this. So you'll email Nicolette Boston. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And she will compile the list of kids that are interested. And this is an online training that is available anytime. So once that list is complete, we'd like to have it within the next two weeks. She will submit the list to the Red Cross and we will issue a purchase order, or excuse me, we will put it on the district's account. Then we will, then the students will, there'll be some kind of a process where we get ahold of the kids and say, you can go on, you're registered. You can take the course at any time. I know that we have a lot of good kids who take a lot of social responsibility in high school. It's one of the points of pride of our high school. I would encourage our kids to do this. Now, they're going to have work to do on remote learning days, but they may not have seven and a half hours of work. So they might be able to commit some of their time to do it for our families. And I know that our students are entrepreneurial because every year, tons of students win the Entrepreneur Award through our business department and they can do this. I also encourage them not only to be entrepreneurial, but to be reasonable in their negotiations for what they are willing to provide. And community service credit is a really good thing.
Good point.
Okay, to help the parent. Yeah, I, I don't oppose kids making a buck to provide a service for the family. But I also feel like doing it for the good of the whole is also very important and you learn a lot through doing it. So as close to free as possible would be nice.
I just want to make a comment. I mean, I think your, your comment at the end there, Mr. Simon's about for the good of the whole. One of the things, and I will move to the board forum next, but I wanted to make a couple of comments. You know, communication between parents and principals, families, the district is going to be critical in this whole process of return to school. And one of the things we always talk about as a community here is how wonderful it is. We get together, we pull together, we rally our resources and we do, we get the job done and we help each other out. And that's what we're asking our families and our parents, our kids to do that as we face this kind of extraordinary circumstance. You know, pulling. You know, pulling together means, you know, we, we make sacrifices, as we have since March, and we, and we make things happen and we get the job done, like I said, in the best interest of all our students, and meet those needs as best we can. We know this is going to shift, and this is the start of that process and the planning, and we know there's going to be issues, we know we're going to face those issues, but we're going to overcome those issues and make the best experience we can for our children, and make sure that it's a safe environment for both students, families, and staff. So I really, really want to emphasize that. This plan really emphasizes safety, it emphasizes opportunities for kids across the spectrum of K-12, special education, CTE, whatever the needs are, and, and that's the important, we're to start that measured response, and then we're going to make sure that we can pivot if we have to, and grow, expand, contract, whatever it means, and we'll get it done. So we're going to make sure that happens as a board, we support our administration, it's a good starting point, I really appreciate the public's questions, we took a lot of time tonight to do these things, to make sure that it was clear, it was at least enough to get information so you can make good decisions as a family and as a community, and we'll continue that conversation in August as we evolve this, this process and hear more from the state and the governor. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to the other board members for some comments. Well, look to maybe Mr. Dunn, who is virtual, if you want to, we'll start with you, John.
Okay, Mike, thank you for the opportunity. First, I would like to reiterate what Mike said to the community. Thank you for your participation in this event. These are challenging times, and when, when we look at this time, we really have to look at the historical aspects of how big this really is. When you're in the midst of it, I, it's hard to grasp it at times. Our kids were dealt an unfair hand in March when their school was abruptly closed. They didn't really get time to adjust or explain, have it explained to them on, on what the new model was, whether they were in kindergarten or to the 12th grade. And I applaud our district's commitment to all students equally, and we as a community have to remember that, that equity in education and its relevancy to each individual family is very important to try to maintain this. And I think through this plan, it really keeps the eye on the ball for a couple of things. It helps to bring some normalcy back to all students, getting them back into the routine and requirements. They've been tasked with a lot of self-discipline exercises in the last quarter, this, we're going to try to get them back, and I think it's really important, we can't lose sight of that. There is going to be a lot of people who are disgruntled, there's going to be a people that this affects in many different ways, and they're all valid. But to go back to Jeff's comment, that what is good for the whole is probably the most important thing that we can keep in mind, that we're all going to contribute and sacrifice together. And if individuals and families have very specific needs that we can assist them with, that is what our role is here. And the other part of this is, this is far from over, and this model also enables the district to prepare and keep a plan in place if the total shutdown happens to happen. And if that comes, at least our distance learning models will be a lot firmer, a lot more goal-oriented and mission-specific. So I think for us to try to dive into some real specifics on things that are changing daily. 148,000 Americans have lost their lives of COVID so far, 32,000 New Yorkers. This event is, in a historical perspective, is as big as World War II and rationing and all the major events in our history as a country. And when we look at all these events, the greatest strength that we have is to bind together as a community, find a common goal, and move forward. And I think in the East Greenwich School District community, the fact that we had defined common goals prior to this is really helping us through this process. So I want to thank everyone who was involved in the task force, especially our staff, administrators from top to bottom. I have all the confidence in the world that we're going to continue to provide an ed, an education that is admittedly modified, but will not leave our children in a deficit. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thanks, John. We'll move to my left then with other board members, Jennifer or anything? You're all set? Michelle?
I guess I would be a little bit remiss to say that I'm disappointed that we don't have full-time K through five. I think there's limitations to it, and I understand that, but I would ask that we continue to progress on maybe reaching out a little bit more in the childcare, and maybe instead of having just assistance in the childcare, we could have it in more of an academic approach that kids could go to on those days that they're supposed to be remote. Something that feels a little bit more of a classroom environment, if possible. I, I understand everybody's concern about daycare, and I appreciate that, but I'm more worried about the social-emotionalness of the kids from K to five and just learning to be foundational into the academic world. So if we could try to do that, I agree, equality for all is very, very important, I think that high schools and middle schools need to have that. I worry about that K through two, where they're brand-new to the world of, of school, and can we try to get a little bit more structure in those, those remote days?
We will do that.
With maybe childcare.
Yeah. We were, we were thinking about, and actually the Rensler Superintendent, Mr. Kardashian and I have been talking about this concept, because he has a similar need, and although they haven't rolled out their plan yet, that these would be more than just childcare, they would really be community learning centers, and how we might be able to structure the day to be academic, you know, attrition, some physical recreational activities, and have it really be more of an enrichment experience on those days, so it wasn't just childcare. And our focus right now has been identifying a place, trying to find out how many kids are up, but we can put together a program model that would be enriching for the kids, and we'll keep looking at that.
That's excellent.
And I appreciate the recommendation.
I, I really appreciate all the hard work the task force did, I know you guys spent countless hours, and we are doing what's right for the students and, and for the families and for the staff, so I truly appreciate that. I, we just know that's the biggest concern our community has, so we need to at least continue to address it and see how it can be modified.
It's on my mind all the time, and we're trying to figure out a way to offset the impact and have it be a good experience for all the kids.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Mark?
I agree with and echo a lot of Michelle's comments, the, the job that this district did in putting together this plan is, especially in the short amount of time that the, the state gave us to do it, I think the district did a very good job in putting out a plan. And I think, you know, that, that smaller age group is key to at least be monitoring that and looking at that and seeing if there are other ways that we can try to accomplish something with that K-5 population. We don't know what the governor's going to say next week, he could say, remote learning for everybody, I mean, we don't, we don't know. And then the other problem that we see is the differences in the national level versus the state levels is, is going to also play a factor into this. We heard somebody talk about federal funding question, you know, and right now, the national level is taking a different stance than the state levels are, so we'll see how that plays out, so, but I do appreciate all the effort that everybody put in. Again, I appreciate Jeff, you saying that this is going to be something that we're going to review daily, and if the opportunity arises to, to bring in more students, you know, that's appreciated.
Yes. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark. Deanna?
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone on the task force for everything that they've done, and for you, Jeff, all week going through all the emails that have been coming through, doing your best to address them and coming up with solutions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deanna. Kathleen?
Again, thank you to everyone who's worked so hard, and thank you to the community who's brought their concerns forward and given us time to look at them, and I truly agree with John that we are all going to have to come together, Mike said the same thing, but thank you for sending in the questions, thank you for bringing the concerns, maybe bringing some stuff to light that we hadn't thought of, though. I find that rather hard, because this was so detailed, I did read all 95 pages, and then you added the frequently asked questions, which I think brought us up to about 105, but I really do appreciate the amount of detail, thought, and the entire process that's gone into all of this, and thank you again to everyone who has voiced their concerns and also their appreciation for everything you've done.
Thank you.
I also want to thank administration for a comprehensive and well-thought-out plan. Thank the community for giving us information and addressing their concerns. We do agree, every child counts, our littlest, our biggest, and we need to do what's right for every child. One thing that I'd like to ask, if we can look at, as we get more parents that indicate that they would like full remote, does that, will that change our numbers enough that we might be able to do a little bit more as far as getting the kids into the classroom? I'd like to look closely at that. Also, our teachers that are teaching remotely, face-to-face, what they have coming in front of them is unbelievable amount of work, and we appreciate everything that they do, and we recognize how difficult it's going to be for them. In regard to special ed, I just want to make a comment regarding the Remote Learner Day. My thought process was the same thing at first, why aren't these kids in there if they need the help for five days? However, now I understand, God forbid we go back to full remote, we've at least prepared those kids to do a little bit better, maybe a whole lot better next time. One question for you, Jeff, is there anything regarding clubs and activities, any plans as far as reinstituting clubs and activities?
We haven't had that discussion yet, I'm going to be discussing that with Mr. Harkin, and I have had, starting today, set up a process of labor management discussions with each of the unions, and I'll be meeting with the Teachers Association, and that'll be one of the topics we talk about. We'd like to have the clubs, but we'd like to do it safely, and how that would be done, you know, with social distancing and all of that, we have to have those discussions, and we haven't had them yet, but it's one of the topics that we're going to discuss on Friday.
And then one other comment to the students who are asking about the first aid course, thank you so much, you know, it really shows that it takes a village, and for our students to be looking to help is just a wonderful tribute to the parents and to this community.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor.
Thanks, Joanne. All right. And again, a reminder that the FAQs will be up with some of the new questions, right, Jeff?
Yes.
We'll try to get those together, we add those to the FAQ to address more parent concerns and issues, and that'll be an ongoing process, again, for people, August 5th, August 13.
Yes.
Again, a fluid process, a community forums that'll be available, like Mark said, the daily review, and again, addressing concerns as they arise, communication is important between everyone involved to make sure this works.
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you.
Moving on the agenda, discussion items, we talked about this little, you want to go into the COVID-19 coordinator?
I'm going to, our people are probably tired of my voice, so I'm going to let, I'm going to let Marissa Cannon talk about this, develop the job description.
So we'll turn it over to Marissa, our HR person, to talk about this.
So as Mr. Simons had touched upon briefly, the reopening guidance provided by the State of New York does require us to identify an employee specifically with a medical background to be our district's COVID-19 coordinator. That coordinator will help assist the district in compliance with all aspects of the district's reopening plan, as well as any modifications to that plan as the year progresses. This individual will act as a liaison between our administrators, our Department of Health, and the community, and will be tasked with managing and answering questions from our staff, our parents and legal guardians, and community members regarding the COVID-19 health emergency, and if there's any questions our community or our parents have regarding specific components of the reopening plan, this individual would help assist them with that. What we will be doing is making sure this individual is maintaining compliance for any operational issues and helping resolve those before activities return to the new normal levels, making that person the main point of contact for the district. So if any staff member in any of our buildings has a question, we would be asking that that staff member talk to their administrator, but also the COVID-19 coordinator for that main point of contact. And if there is a suspected or a confirmed case of COVID-19, or if there was close contact with the person that had COVID-19, this individual would make contact with the Department of Health, follow all the procedures, work with the Department of Health for contact tracing, and then with confidentiality requirements, this person will need to maintain those confidentiality in accordance with federal and state law and regulations. The next part of the plan, as, as long as this job description is approved, would be making contact with the Rensler County Civil Service Commission to add this new nursing position to our district, and then opening up our recruitment efforts to obtain a highly-qualified individual with the appropriate nursing license to be employed.
Any questions for Marissa?
Is there a possibility of getting a separate position?
Certainly. Is there, would there be a specific licensure required for that? It's the same?
Somebody with years.
Okay.
Experienced infectious disease.
We can certainly put that as a preferred quality.
Good suggestion.
Joanne?
Question, are you looking to make this, what type of contact, for year one, or for year 10?
So right now, we had conversations, we were thinking this position might be in place definitely for this year, but it could be continued into year two. It would be part of the school-related personnel bargaining agreement, this individual would have the same, you know, benefits, sick time, insurances, as any other member of SRP, but we would make it known that this would be temporary in nature, but could extend up to that, those two years, and, you know, we would reevaluate on an annual basis.
Do we need to take an action on this, I don't, do we put that on the, I'm sure if we put that on the concern agenda, too? Is there any board members who do not?
Yeah, we just kind of want to, want to, discussion of whether we can move forward on.
I mean, I think it, point of contact?
It has to be a separate individual, it can't be one of the already full nurses?
We think, we think it should be a separate individual, because it will have, we think it's going to be a significant load, and we believe that the nurses are going to be having to staff and respond to the situations in the buildings, and also the, we have considerations regarding staffing the isolation rooms. So we, we talked about with our nurse coordinator whether or not it could be done by existing staff, we talked about whether the nurse coordinator might want to move into that role, and there's just too much to do, to be honest with you, and it can't be done. We don't want to draw the administrators or the nurses away from the students to be able to handle some of this liaison work. So we evaluated that, but we don't, we, we think it can't be done well by existing nurses.
I always think more the words of an existing employee, bringing in a, a nurse temporarily to handle the building, because the current nurses are familiar with the district, are familiar with all the.
Yeah, we, we would, we were, we are trying to draw, quite honestly, one of our own nurses into the position, and then we would backfill with a, with a.
Building nurse, a temp.
Yes, yes.
To exit.
It's like a nurse on special assignment.
Right, right, and if that position ended, that person would revert back to.
That's right.
Their school building.
That's ideal.
That would be ideal, because they know the buildings, they know the kids, that's right.
They know the administrators, they know our policies.
Exactly. Good point, Mark.
Yes. I misunderstood, yeah, that's exactly what. Yes. I misunderstood. Yeah, that's exactly what we're trying to do.
Just a quick question from Marissa. Haven't we had issues in the past trying to recruit school nurses, though? Aren't they a difficult position to fill?
We actually, this year, had a retirement for a school nurse that's district-wide. Ms. McGrath conducted interviews last week, and we actually drew a very nice candidate pool. We had two very highly specialized nurses, and we offered the position to one of those candidates today, and they have accepted, so.
Good news.
And I think we can, I mean, I think I support the position based on what I've been told. I think everyone is supportive of the role, so let's move forward.
Thank you, Mike.
Things rolling, and then?
Thank you to the board.
Marissa, you're also the first up on committee reports, so why don't you take your mic there and keep going?
I just wanted to provide a brief update on our instructional staffing vacancies. As of now, we have 13 positions that need to be filled for the 2020-21 school year, five of which are elementary positions. Our administration team at Janay, Green Meadow, and Red Mill have been working on conducting not only screenings, but also first-round interviews. We were very fortunate to have a high applicant pool. One of the positions drew in over 200 applicants. For the initial screenings, we screened over 40 individuals. And then for first-round interviews, we conducted them on July 24th and July 28th. The interview committees are working now to identify their top choices to move forward to final round interviews with our central office committee. We currently have Point 6 Health opening due to a resignation. First-round interviews were conducted on July 22nd. Mr. Leonard has completed reference checks, and final round interviews will be the week of August 3rd. We have one full-time chemistry position at the high school level. Our Columbia High School administration team did conduct interviews, and they are currently in the process of conducting reference checks. We have two Spanish positions. One is full-time, the other is a Point 2. We did have to repost the Point 2 position because the identified candidate was unable to accept. That posting is going to close on August 5th. And in our full-time position, it is split between Columbia High School and Goff. The full-time interviews were conducted on July 16th, and we have final round interviews scheduled for tomorrow at 3:00 PM with our central office committee. We also have two special education positions that are vacant. One is at the elementary level, and the other is at the middle school level. Ms. McGrath and Ms. Scalachi will be conducting interviews potentially next week. The posting just closed on Monday, and we had over 40 candidates apply for that. Our middle school special education position, we had to repost that role. That role has been challenging to fill because it requires two certifications. It requires the elementary 1 through 6 for students with disabilities, because there's a 6th grade component. But it also includes the secondary certification, 7 through 12, because this individual will be teaching 7th and 8th grade students as well. So it has been reposted. We are in still search of a candidate that can have both certifications in accordance with New York State law. And that application deadline is going to be August 3rd, which is next Monday. We have the new social worker position at Goff Middle School. We conducted final round interviews yesterday, and an offer has been made to the candidate, and we are just waiting to hear back from that candidate tomorrow. And lastly, we have a Point 6 technology teacher. It resulted in two applicants. This is a very hard-to-fill area. It is a shortage area. I am hopeful that one of those two candidates will be able to take on that role. And I know 13 teaching positions sounds like a lot right now, but we will make every effort to get these hires on the next board meeting on August 19th, so we have all hands on deck come the beginning of our school year.
Thanks, Marissa. Next, we have Linda. Anything on your, I see a transparency report. Is there anything you want to talk about there?
Do you like me to start at page 1 and go through 26?
No, I want to give you the exact, high-level, 40,000.
I will just say as an overview, the transparency is a New York State reporting requirement where it, it requires us to take our budget for the 2020-2021 school year and break it down so that we allocate it on a per-pupil basis. And the whole, whole gist of this reporting really is so that the governor can see that we are spreading our funding equitably over the entire district. That being said, in January, we'll talk about the ESA reporting, which is actually the same type of reporting, but is a federal requirement based on actual expenditures from last year. So if there are any questions, I'll take that.
And I mean, it's an important report because I know that the, if you look at some of the last pages, you can see this spending per pupil by building, and there's obvious reasons based on makeup and configurations to some of those buildings, the classrooms, things like that, that dictate those differences. It's not like we're not spending enough money on students, that's for sure, so.
Very good, Mike.
Mr. McHugh, are you out there still? You have a short presentation on the professional development plan?
Yeah, I can go through it fairly quick. Our professional development plan for the employees of the East Greenberg Central School District annually needs to be approved by our Board of Education. It's on the consent agenda. Once it is approved by the board and Mr. Simons signs off, it's uploaded through Teach. So real quick, regarding our professional development, a real quick look back. This year, you know, our PD really focused on safety. One of the things I kind of want to highlight is that we took advantage of the Safe Schools online webinars. Another major area was academics and wellness. We focused a lot on meeting the needs of economically disadvantaged students and families. That was part of our ESA accountability report, so we had to make sure that our PD was targeted towards that. A lot of emphasis on technology. Couple of the highlights, our pro-teacher, Power Teacher Pro, that's our student information system, Power School. It's the first time that we've taken advantage of some professional development in that area. Technology for English language learners. And another highlight is FOLIT. That is our library automation system that we purchased through Questar, but we offered professional development on how teachers could leverage that system as well. Some of the additional offering, one of the highlights is the SEAL of Bilinguality Informational System, or session. We were approved by the State Education Department for the SEAL of Bilinguality for our students, so that professional development was very critical. Really important is a breakdown in the slides that you had a chance to look at. By month, there were over 3,342 different sessions that were attended by our faculty and staff. Our EGTA and our SRP participated in well over 5,000 professional developments this past school year. If you look at the breakdown even in March, April, and May, and June, when we were remote, there were still well over 100 to 300 sessions that were attended by staff and faculty. The majority of those focused on online instruction. Really quick, moving forward to this year, we have a standing district committee. There's 32 members. On that committee, all buildings are represented, all groups are represented. We have six scheduled meetings throughout the year. Our major goals for this year are to, you know, focus purposeful, targeted, intentional professional development. Sustain, meaning that it's got to be ongoing throughout the year rather than that one-hit wonder. And it's got to be embedded. We're very limited with our professional development days. And faculty and staff, we're going to need that time for professional collaboration. So when we do offer PD, it's got to be embedded into the workday. Some of the goals are to really find our hidden leaders. We've done that with technology. We have our own staff and faculty members leading professional development in those areas. But our priorities for next year, there's three main priorities. One is leveraging the increased understanding of the value of technology to support teaching and learning, maximizing the tasks that can be accomplished through the use of technology, rethinking assessment, especially with the COVID-19 challenges and remote and online learning. We really need to move away from the traditional pen and paper assessment. We need to start tapping into students' higher-order thinking skills and rethink how we're assessing students and evaluating students. A unique thing that we have going is that we are establishing a partnership with the University at Albany's Literacy, Teaching and Learning Department. It's the Interactive Strategies Approach to Teaching Reading. We're going to start that initiative with our academic intervention services, our remedial reading teachers, and our K-2 teachers. We're going to hope to grow that out. This is the first collaborative partnership between a public school district and the University at Albany. And we're hoping to implement that next year as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Jim regarding the PD plan? Nope. Thanks, Jim. And I know on, on top of everything else, you know, putting together a plan for professional development, and then, you know, targeting it towards the needs of the current pandemic and the things we need to face to prepare teachers for the aspirations in our plan. And it's a, it's a heavy lift, but I know we can, we can get through it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Simons, anything committee-wise?
No, I think I've given a full report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good. The draft minutes are next. This was the first draft minutes will be for the public hearing. Everyone here was present. Jennifer was not at the public hearing, I believe. Came in late, so well. All right, so any questions or changes, revisions on the public hearing minutes? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve those hearing minutes. Kathleen, second. Michelle, all those in favor? All those abstaining? Approved. We got Jennifer abstaining. Next one is the, I'm sorry, I might do those out of order. As mentioned, the public hearing, we also had the organizational meeting minutes, same thing. I think, Jen, you were a little bit, weren't available for that one either. So I need a motion to approve that. If there's no questions or comments. Michelle, Joanne, second. All those in favor? Those abstaining? Jennifer? Approved. And lastly, we have our regular meeting minutes. All members present, any revisions to the minutes? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve that. Jennifer, second. Deanna, all those in favor? Approved. Thanks, everybody. Moving to regular business, we have the approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Any questions or comments? No? Need a motion to approve that? Joanne, second. Kathleen, all those in favor? It's approved. Reports and presentations, we have a policy, several first reading policies. Did Larry send a message to us? Get moving on our policy?
I believe this was Mr. Edson's final actions as the liaison to the board policy committee. I can summarize them quickly.
Let's summarize the policies.
This is a first reading, so if there are any changes that the board would like to make after reviewing these policies, we can change it between now and the next meeting. The Parents' Bill of Rights and the Information and Data Privacy Regulation, as well as the associated policy are all in relationship to the plan that we presented to you last year related to coming into compliance with 2D requirements, which relate to data privacy for the district, students, families, district information. We have to have policies that outline the parents' rights regarding ensuring privacy of their children's information. And we also have to have the associated regulations to support the policy. Regulations are more specific in terms of the procedures. And then we also have to have one that prescribes what we need to do to make sure that the information and data is private. So the first three all relate to Title, not Title 2D, but Ad-Law 2D, which relates to data privacy, which is a state requirement. Pandemic planning is a general policy that is recommended by the New York State School Boards Association. You may recall Mr. Tuker presenting the safety plan, which is still open for public comment. We will be required to identify procedures for pandemic planning, and this policy basically enables the district to do that. School safety plans and teams, I mentioned that earlier, that the School Boards Association now has a policy that would require those. We've had those in place at the district level and the building levels. This simply confirms our practices that we already have in the district. Online learning and course credit, we're doing some of that now. This simply enables us to continue to explore those options as options for students, not only during this unprecedented period, but as we move kids back to school, we'll have conversations with our Teachers Association about other ways that we can also continue to offer online credit as a supplement to our in-person instruction. This doesn't prescribe any particular courses. It doesn't, it is, it doesn't supersede any contractual obligations we might have in this area. It just enables us to guide the work. And board member training, I had intended to take that off. I forgot about that. That's something that we're going to table because I haven't discussed it with Mr. Buno. I did, but I didn't really.
Yeah, this is an interesting policy. I mean, it's, it's like refresher training for board members. I think there must be a feeling that people aren't, again, these are NISBA recommended policies for, I'm not sure, this board has always been very active in terms of conference attendance and doing trainings. Not sure if there's a need for this, but I, give us your thoughts. I mean, I'm not wedded to this policy very much in terms of, you know, additional refresher mandating or acquiring training for board members, but.
Right, that's, so we don't have to, we don't have to approve that one for a first reading if we want to have more discussion of it tonight? I was supposed to take it off?
Yeah, let's pull it off.
Okay.
And then we'll
Okay.
revisit that at a future meeting. So with that, we have, we want to move those policies from, except the board member training. So I need somebody to move that. A motion to move those forward to second reading? Kathleen, second? Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. Move to second meeting. Is there any other reports or presentations?
No other reports.
Tabled motions, I don't have any old business board members. I don't have anything written down to revisit. So moving to the consent agenda, we have several items on here. Items A through N. Any comments or questions or things that we need to look at? Jenna, uh, Joanne? Poll?
B.
B? Separate vote? Anyone else? I was looking at the item M. Yes, that was the
Oh, okay, yes.
So this is an interesting item, and I was curious about what both thought about. Let's take a quick look at that again. It basically gives the, some policy suspension ability to the superintendent of the board. Any thoughts on that? Either way.
I talked to Don Budman about this, and I talked to him today about it. This was sent from the Farrar Law Firm to all of their clients because with all of the flurry of planning that's going on for reopening and the attorney's workload in terms of responding to specific issues regarding reopening, there may be situations where we have to implement certain practices that may not be consistent with our policy. I talked to him today, what would be some examples of those kinds of things? And I haven't had time to do a full policy review, either has really done. So this is like a blanket policy that says, in the event that we are, needed to come in compliance with the reopening regulations and our policies weren't consistent, I would have the discretion and authority to do that. One issue might be, and I don't even know whether it's the case in our district, I don't think it is. If a district were, for example, more generous in its transportation than what was required by the state and was busing kids that were within the required mileage limitations, a district could respond to that and say, you know what? In order to meet these transportation requirements from reopening, we may not have, we may still have to follow the state guidelines, but not the local policy. There might be other issues that deal with having to get some staffing in place for something. I, I would not, so I don't know what would come up regarding this. This is just covers really the district's actions. This is just covers really the district's actions, but in the event that I did hear from, have to steer from policy, I certainly would inform the board before taking, for implementing anything. This just gives, this prevents the board from having to come to a meeting, revise its policy on a temporary basis, only to have to change it back when normal circumstances remain.
Given the crazy change in the environment all the time, it gives you a little bit of veto power at this point, and then we can go and reprove it.
But I would assure you, if any of those issues came up, I would communicate to the whole board.
Of course you would.
In a timely manner.
In a timely manner, yes, good explanation. So with that, I need to, we'll go back to the agenda item. Any other questions or comments?
So this is only for this school year, though, correct?
Correct.
Just making sure.
So items A through N, with the exception of B, need a motion to approve those? Michelle, second. Mark, all those in favor? Got you with your hand up. Got you with your hand up, so take advantage of it. And then going to item B, need a motion to approve that? Kathleen, second. Deanna, all those in favor? All those abstaining? One, Joanne? Approved. New business board members? New business is really the plan and moving forward with that. We have a second public forum. Anything come up, Linda, that we need to, that didn't cover the topics in the previous public forum?
Ninety-eight.
Okay, it'll be here a while. No pressure.
Hold on a second, babe. One question regarding the MAP program at Goff. Is that considered special education, a self-contained program that would allow the student to come the four days in person?
We are planning to have our alternative education students come in four days a week. That would include MAP, CTAP, and CAP. That is my understanding. Did I miss anything?
That is not.
It's an alternative education program, but we've had discussions of alternative education programs coming in four days a week.
We're still analyzing the state's [inaudible].
Okay. Right. We did have a conversation about CTAP, though, and CTAP is coming in.
Good question.
That is a good one.
Where do people find the frequently asked questions guide?
Tomorrow. It's on Board Docs right now, but tomorrow, if they go to the yellow banner at the top of the homepage under school reopening, it should be right there. I don't know that it's there right now. It'll be there tomorrow morning. I think it's on Board Docs right now.
Mr. Simons, I'm not sure if the public heard Molly's answer because we had in the room, but she didn't have a microphone.
We are, the answer to the question of whether the middle, middle school alternative program would be four days a week, we are currently evaluating that. In the case of the CTAP program, we decided that that will be four, four days a week. We're evaluating the other alternative education programs, and we're hoping to be able to determine that there is space to be able to bring those kids in for more in person than what would be scheduled for kids outside that program.
Did you get it right, Molly?
Very good.
Thank you. Anything else, Linda?
No.
All right. Move to the board forum number two. We'll start at my right with Joanne. Good. Kathleen is good. Mr. Mann, good. Michelle, thumbs up. Jennifer?
Good.
Mr. Dunn in virtual land?
You're good.
You got a thumbs up.
Got a thumbs up? Okay, and I'm good, too. Thank you. We will need time for a brief executive session for purposes of personnel, some bargaining updates. We don't anticipate any board business after this executive session, so we will need to give Peter 10 minutes to reset and send the link to Mr. Dunn. Anyone else need to attend?
Mr. McHugh, are you available to do the executive session?
I am.
Thank you.
So Mr. Dunn and Mr. McHugh will go into the executive session, and then everyone else is present. All right, I need a motion to adjourn to go into executive session. Joanne, second. Kathleen, all those in favor? Got you, Mark. All right. Good night, everybody. Thank you for your patience. I hope this was an informative meeting, and have a great night. We'll talk to you soon.
Thank you, Molly.
Good job, as always.